Good morning, members of the Health Scrutiny Committee, and welcome to the meeting. My name is Katrina Cope, I'm the Senior Democratic Services Officer, providing some support to you today. I would like to invite you to look at the first item on the agenda, which is election of chairman. Can I please invite nominations for this? Council Wooton?
Thank you very much indeed, Katrina. I'd like to propose councillor Carl Macy as chairman for 2021/22. Carl has had a successful year as chairman over the past four years, and I know he's absolutely passionate about the health in Lincolnshire. But more importantly, for us, he includes members in his decision-making process, so I'm happy to propose him.
Thank you, councillor Wooton. Do we have a second for that, please?
Thank you. I'm delighted to second councillor Macy's nomination, as he is the ultimate professional as chairman of this committee. He leads from the front, and we all know where we are, and visitors and members alike are gifted the same respect. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wooton. Are there any further nominations? Okay, if that's the case then, so it's proposed and seconded that councillor Carl Macy become chairman of the Health Scrutiny Committee for Lincolnshire for the next year 2021/22. Are we all in agreement? Could I see a show of hands, please? Anyone against? That's carried then. Thank you.
In which case, I'd like to thank you all very much for your support. I look forwards to chairing the meetings over the next 12 months, and of course, being all-inclusive. I think it's fair to say, we want to see the very best for our residents, and this committee will make sure that we push through for that, for our health qualities throughout the county. Thank you. In which case, I would like to, before I continue, once again welcome everyone who was present, and also those that are listening online. I would particularly like to welcome the seven newly appointed members of the committee. Councillors Mark Allen, Richard Cleaver, Lucille Hagues, Sarah Parking, Robert Reed, Mike Thompson, and Linda Wooton. I would also like to welcome councillor Colin Matthews, who is attending as the Executive Support Councillor for NHS Liaison, Community Engagement, Registration and the Coroner's Service. Other participants will be introduced when we reach their item. I think it's important to say at this point that we must all use our microphones as we are being livestreamed as we speak, so it will not pick us up if they are not on, and make sure you switch them off when you've spoken. Also councillor Matthews, I believe you wanted to come in at this point as well?
Yes, I just want to give Sue Woolley's apologies. Sue has a series of meetings that actually clash on a fairly regular and frequent basis with the Health Scrutiny meetings, and in that regard, she wanted you to know that she's sending her apologies, but it's no disrespect to this committee, she just can't be here, and that's why I'm here. Thanks.
Okay, thank you councillor Matthews. In which case, I'd now like to move to agenda item two, the election of the vice-chairman. I would like to nominate from the chair councillor Linda Wooton. Linda has been an advocate of Grantham Hospital, and an excellent substitute on this committee over a number of years, and I feel she would be an excellent vice-chairman in supporting me. Do I have a second for that proposal, please? Councillor Allen?
I'm very happy to second your motion, chairman, that Linda Wooton becomes vice-chairman of this committee.
Thank you councillor Allen. Do I have any other proposals, please? No, in which case, I'd like to go to the vote then, please. All those in favour, please show. Yeah, thank you. Councillor Wooton, you are now the vice-chairman, so welcome. Thank you, and I'll hand over to you to say something.
Thank you very much indeed for putting your faith in me, and I look forward to representing this committee and working with you, chairman. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wooton. I now like to move to agenda item three, apologies for absence or replacement members. Katrina?
Thank you, chairman. We've received apologies from councillor Sandra Harrison from East Lindsay District Council. Councillor Mrs Rosemary Kayby-Brown has put her apologies in, but we have councillor Mark Whittington here as her replacement today. And as councillor Matthews said earlier, we've received an apology from councillor Woolley. Thank you.
Thank you, Katrina. In which case, I'd like to move to agenda item four, declaration of members' interests. Do any members have an interest they wish to declare, please, and get now? No? Okay, in which case, if anything comes up throughout the meeting, please just raise at that point. I'd like to move to agenda item five, the minutes from the 16th of March. Do I have a proposer for these? I plan on taking them on block. Councillor Wooton?
Chairman, have you to propose?
Thank you. Do I have a second, please, for these? Councillor Whittington?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'm happy to second. I was at the meeting, because in the previous council, I was on the Health Scrutiny Committee, and I was at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Whittington. Those in favour, please show now. Thank you. Those that wish to vote against, please show now. In which case, any abstentions, please? Thank you, that's carried. I'd now like to move on to agenda item six, the chairman's announcements. My announcements have been circulated with the agenda. My supplementary announcements were circulated on the 22nd of June. And I would also like to take this point to say, on behalf of the committee, that I intend to write to councillor Chris Brewer, thanking him for his long service on this committee. Chris first joined the committee in 2011, and served as the committee's vice-chairman from 2013 until this year. He was an excellent commodity to this committee, and he will be missed, I'm sure, by all, so... In regards to the announcements, does anyone want to raise anything on those, or are we happy to note them, please? Okay, in which case, if I have a proposer, we note them. Thank you councillor Wooton. Seconded, please? Councillor Linda Wooton, thank you. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. They're noted. I would now like to just raise the questions of meeting conduct. We have a long agenda this morning, so I would ask that you keep your questions and contributions succinct and concise, ideally no more than two questions per item. And I would also like to stress the importance of treating all our contributors today with respect, and to bear in mind our role as constructive scrutineers. I propose that we now move on to agenda item seven, and that is the United Lincolnshire Hospitals NHS Trust General Update. This is on pages 25 to 38 of the agenda pack, and our presenters today are Mark Brassington, Deputy Chief Executive, and Director of Improvement and Integration, and Simon Evans, Chief Operating Officer. As normal, if I could hand over to you, just to have a sort of 10 minutes run through the paper, and then we'll take questions after this. Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you very much for that welcome, and good morning, everybody. I'll just take a few minutes just to provide the most up-to-date position of the organisation, if that's okay. I note that you have the Chief Executives Report and the Restoration Recovery Report from our last board meeting, and I don't propose to go through those in detail. Like I said, I'll just provide the most up-to-date position for our organisation. So, I'm pleased to say that, as of today, we only have one Covid patient within our organisation, that's at Pilgrim Hospital. And since the Covid pandemic has commenced, here in Lincolnshire, in our acute hospitals, we've seen and treated over 3,000 Covid patients. And I'm sure that you'd like to join me in thanking the huge efforts of our staff, not just within the hospitals but across Lincolnshire, in caring for all of the additional patients that we've had to through the pandemic to date. And I'd just like to remind the committee that through Covid, we peaked during wave one, which was in April 2020, of having 104 Covid patients in our hospital beds. During wave two, and as part of winter, that was significantly busier for us as a hospital, and we peaked at having 253 patients in our hospital beds. So it is really good news that, as things stand today, we just have that single Covid patient. But obviously, we look at the news and the rising cases that we are seeing in the community, and we hope that the vaccination programme continues to break that link between positive cases and hospitalisations. And just on the point of vaccinations, I'm really proud to be able to say that our organisation, as part of the hospital hub, we provided over 41,000 vaccinations to health and social care staff across Lincolnshire. Our hospital hubs have now closed, because we have concluded the vaccinations of health and care staff. However, we do continue to have a steady stream of people coming forward still for their vaccinations, and they can continue to do that. We do continue to run a complex clinic, so this is a clinic for people who require a vaccination and wish to have one, but they have some medical conditions, which means they need to be more closely monitored. So we still do have that presence around vaccinations, and if there is a further ask of us, we'll of course step up and reopen our vaccination efforts across our hospital hubs. And it's really good as well to be able to say that the number of staff that are away from our hospitals because of Covid-related issues has significantly reduced, and our absences are now more down towards our normal expected levels, which is positive for the work that we know that we need to do over the coming weeks and months. Our hospitals are extremely busy, our bed occupancies are very high. This is driven by two things. One is there's been an extraordinary increase in emergency demand upon the hospitals. We're seeing that, and so are our partners, especially our ambulance service. But also, we are seeing significantly more elective patients, routine patients. These are patients who have been waiting for some time during the pandemic, that we are now able to treat in greater numbers. And all of that is ensuring that our hospitals are extremely busy at this time. So in terms of access, because we know it's really important to our patients and to the public to know how long people are currently waiting. If we look at our waiting list position for our operations, these are people who have come to our patients and they need some form of intervention. What's happened now is that we're not treating people in terms of time served on the waiting list. We're now treating people based on clinical urgency. So our clinicians regularly look at the waiting list to ensure that we know who the most urgent people are on our waiting list. They've got priority statuses, and just to share our position against some of those priority statuses. So priority one patients, these are the most urgent, these need to be treated within 72 hours. We have zero patients waiting in that category at this moment in time. Priority two, these are people that need to be treated within four weeks. Our current waiting time for these patients is just over six weeks. We know that we've got more to do, and we are committed to get below the four weeks and to speed up access as far as we can. That compares favourably to other organisations within our region, but also nationally. In terms of cancer patients, they're being treated more quickly in there, we're prioritising our cancer patients. So they are being treated with just over four weeks, so they're more in line with the expected access times for those surgical patients. The other group of patients are particularly long-waiting patients. You'd have seen in the media that there are many, many thousands of patients waiting for over a year for treatment. In Lincolnshire, in ULHT, we peaked at over 2,000 people waiting over a year for treatment. I'm pleased to say, as of today, that's down to 937, but still 937 more patients than we should have waiting over a year. And we're committed, again, to reducing that as far to zero as we possibly can. And historically, we are very good within this indicator as an organisation. The other area, and the final area I just wish to touch upon, is Grantham Restoration. We're really pleased to report that we're on track with our restoration of services back to the Grantham site. And these services will be restored back to the services that were on-site in May 2020, with some additions. Notably, a chemotherapy on-site service will remain, as will the additional theatres that we have at Grantham. We have two at this moment in time. Unfortunately, one of those will need to move off-site, but we are looking at other opportunities to bring additional theatres back onto the Grantham site, because we're committed to using Grantham as our principal elective site in order to ensure that we can treat as many people as we can as we recover through and from the pandemic. So that's my update that I wish to provide today, and we're willing to answer any questions that you may have. But I'll just ask Simon if he has anything he wishes to add at this point.
Thanks for that, Mark. So nothing more really to add to that. The Grantham restoration, the days described in that report do describe a 30th of June commencement for the restoration of A&E services and the, what we call our undifferentiated medical patients, that's our emergency medical position. I'm pleased to say that, having reviewed that over the last few days, that is still the case, and the teams are now putting into play all of the necessary rotas and actions to go ahead with that on the 30th. So, but other than that, as Mark says, very happy to take any questions on that, or any of the other updates that Mark's given. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Thank you, Simon, for the presentation. We'll now move into questions. I propose that we have around about 20 minutes' worth of questions, so do I have anyone that would like to raise anything, please? Councillor Wooton?
Thank you very much indeed, chairman. Good morning, Mark. On page 32, you talk about the A&E at Grantham only being open when it's restored from 8am to 6.30pm. Yet currently, the UTC, the Urgent Treatment Centre, is open 24/7. Now, I had the unfortunate journey to Lincoln A&E a couple of months ago, and there was 60 people waiting to be seen there. So why are you continually trying to close Grantham A&E down, or cut the hours down? Why can't it be open fully, or even 12 hours? Thank you.
Thank you, I'll just hand over to you to answer, thank you.
Yes, thank you. So I'll start and I'll hand over to Simon to give a little bit of the specifics with regards to what services will be in place. As we know, historically, there have been challenges with how we've been able to staff and to maintain urgent care services across Lincolnshire. We had to take that unfortunate decision to reduce the opening hours at Grantham in order to support the overall delivery of services across Lincolnshire. That decision was supported from a number of reviews, and the recommendation was that it should remain in place with a limited opening hours until the outcome of the acute service review was known, and a preferred way forward was decided. We, through Covid, took the decision, as people know, to turn Grantham into a green site, which meant we had to remove the action to an emergency service. And through that, we're able to put in a 24/7 urgent treatment centre. Now, reverting back into more normal working, the staff and colleagues that supported that 24/7 urgent treatment centre needed to return back to their more normal roles, and therefore, we wouldn't be able to sustain a 24/7 service at the Grantham Hospital site. We are returning people back to their roles within the United Lincolnshire Hospitals, but also within the community service as well. And we would like to thank LCHS for all their support that they have provided us in being able to maintain a UTC at Grantham, which has provided that extended access, as you've mentioned councillor. And it is unfortunate that we're not able to maintain that as we head forwards into the future. But Simon, is there anything you wish to add at this point?
Thank you. And just to say to councillor Wooton, I'm sorry that you experienced that position at Lincoln, where we had more than 60 patients in the department. And this is becoming an ever-more-increasing experience, and that is why we have undertaken already a significant expansion in the Lincoln A&E and UTC physical premises, as well as changes in our pathways in order to be able to better signpost to services for some patients that don't require A&E services, but do require same-day emergency care, and that is what we call our SDEC units, our same-day emergency care units. Both Lincoln and Pilgrim have had expansion, and that's also reflecting the fact that we are still having to operate in a Covid world. Although we do have only a single patient positive Covid in our hospitals, we have a number who are query-Covid, who are currently being investigated, who could possibly have Covid. And we need to make sure that our pathways in our emergency departments and right through our hospitals are able to separate our patients with symptoms and without, so that we protect those patients from further outbreaks and from nosocomial transmission, that is, patient-to-patient or staff-to-patient transmission in hospitals. And the other thing is that, obviously, we reflect that whilst the overall levels of activity have increased, we are certainly seeing now some particular pinch points in early evening, late afternoon, particularly between that 4pm and 8 and 9pm in the evenings, where we do see, in some cases, a 200% or 300% increase in the hourly attendance. And that is just a phenomenon that was there prior to Covid, but it certainly has come back and is certainly sort of exacerbated since services have restored back to their more normal ways of working.
Councillor Wooton, you'd like to come back?
Yes, thank you very much indeed. Simon, so you must acknowledge that the Urgent Treatment Centre at Grantham has been a success. Not only a success for you, but a success for the people of Grantham, and you also acknowledge that there is a demand for the service. So don't you think then that you should at least reconsider the hours of opening of A&E at Grantham? Thank you.
Certainly, we have considered that. I think it's also important to notice, there is quite a different model in a UTC compared to an A&E. And I think whilst Mark's thanked our LCHS colleagues, we have to thank our A&E colleagues as well, who have been part of that. But in order to be able to deliver the more comprehensive elements of the A&E service, it does require that different model. And unfortunately, we don't have the ability to be able to create that. But I agree, I think the UTC has been a terribly successful model in the circumstances that we've been put in. I think they've done a tremendous job, and I think they've actually managed to offer a service to the wider Grantham population and others in a way that absolutely met the demands during that Covid period, so I agree. But unfortunately, it is a different model, and we're not able to just continue to operate at a 24-hour rate.
Okay, thank you councillor Wooton. I've now got councillor Whittington, please.
Yes, sir, thank you very much, Mr Chairman. And thank you, Simon and Mark, for your presentation. I've got two questions, which I'll ask them both together. The first one concerns the medical beds at Grantham Hospital, which sort of used to be wards five and six, and one and two. And I know the sort of pre-change in operating model, they were mainly occupied by sort of elderly people from the Grantham area who were sort of in there, and I know that quite a few of the patients or the pathway changed when the Grantham site became the first choice for elective surgery. And I'm just wondering, around those medical beds, obviously, if you're continuing to use Grantham Hospital as your main elective surgery site, it's going to put pressure on those medical beds in terms of their availability as general medical beds for the Grantham population. I'm just wondering if you could give the Grantham a bit of reassurance around, do you think there's sufficient capacity on those wards to not only deal with the elective surgical patients, but also the medical side of things as well? And my second question concerns the extra services that you've been providing on the Moy Park site in Grantham, which I've used on several occasions, as well as my wife, and generally really pleased with them. They're very, very professionally and very well-run, and at the advantage of plenty of parking outside as well. I'm just wondering what the plans are for that site, if the plan is to keep them there to deal with sort of extra outpatient-type capacity, or if that site will be closed down. Thanks, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions, councillor Whittington. In terms of the medical beds, we can confirm that we are assured and confident that the models and the capacity that will be put in place will be able to deal with the level of demand that we're expecting on the Grantham site, whether that be medical and surgical. And the population shouldn't see the change in difference. We are looking at the ways that we provide services, and how we organise ourselves internally, which should help with that. But like I said, the population should be able to access the services that they did in May 2020 on the hospital site at Grantham. So hopefully, that provides you with a degree of reassurance with regards to the first question. In terms of Moy Park, Simon, do you want to just provide the update with regards to the agreement we've recently reached?
Yeah, sure. So thank you for that, and thank you for those positive comments, councillor. It's very helpful to have that feedback, and we are really proud and extremely grateful from Moy Park for the generosity and the support that they've offered us through Covid. We have now just agreed a six-month extension to the use of the Moy Park facility. And what we will see is that some of those services are moving back into the Grantham Hospital. There are many benefits to them being co-located, so for egg There are many benefits to them being co-located, so for example, with the medical beds, our physiotherapy services and our rehab services have a great deal of import into patients who go through our medical pathway. And we would want them to be co-located so that they can offer those services. But at the same time, we also recognise that because of Covid, we are actually having to use a lot more physical space in order to create the two-metre separation, in order to offer staff and patients the protection from that nosocomial transmission threat. So therefore, we do need more clinical space, and for that reason, we're going to continue to use Moy Park. But those services may change and may differ. At the moment, the current understanding is that we'll be offering some extended screening services from there, diabetic eye screening, potentially with some other diagnostics, and also potentially with some cardiac physiology testing running from there as well. And over the course of the next year, we will see the provision of diagnostic services aligning to the demands of patients, and also considering potential health inequalities where access is possibly not optimum for some patient groups, and therefore we might move services closer to them in order to improve the access for those patient groups. So we might see some more changes there as well. But thank you for those comments. And yes, we certainly see the use of that certainly for the next six months, if not beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Whittington. I've got councillor Allen next, please.
Thank you, chairman. It was a point I picked up during the course of the presentation relating to emergency cases and the increasing numbers. And it follows on from the point that councillor Wooton was making about his experience and spreading the pressures perhaps. But I did wonder whether you have any experience or are carrying out any investigations to see if these increasing number of emergency cases, particularly as we come out of Covid and people are more prepared to go to hospital, is anything to do with the GP services and the difficulty of gaining access to them?
I'll hand over to Simon, because he lives and breathes this on a daily basis.
Yes, thank you. It is a great question, and it's one that might seem quite simple on the face of it, but it is quite a complex issue. So certainly in terms of access to primary care service, we continue across Lincolnshire, speaking on behalf of my assistant colleagues, we continue to be able to offer increased access, and certainly the numbers of patients accessing primary care have increased at the same, if not greater, rates than what we've seen in the hospital. What we have seen is that some patients may make some decisions of their own around face-to-face contact and non-face-to-face contact. And we have started to see some degree of trend, and I can't say it's a strong trend at the moment. I don't think we can back that up with a lot of data at the moment. But certainly, the sort of experiential data is that some patients are choosing, instead of having a telephone consultation with primary care colleagues, to visit the A and Es, and probably more specifically, the UTCs. What we do have is that the measures that we've put in place in Lincolnshire are really strong in terms of the ability to be able to deal with that kind of change in behaviour. Our UTCs at Lincoln and Pilgrim in particular, and Grantham certainly whilst it's been operating in the model that we talked about earlier, have seen a huge increase in demand, and they are able to manage that very effectively and to give a good experience to patients of a relatively short turnaround to their concerns without necessarily a massive impact into the A and E major and resus and the more complex pathways, so therefore not have as much of an impact on those that are the most critically ill coming through. That said, even with expanding the way that we have over the course of the last year with the new UTC at Lincoln and expansions in waiting areas over at Pilgrim, they are still extremely busy. And we continue to run messaging and working with our communications colleagues to say, don't come to hospital unless you need to. Please use 111. Please have those conversations with your primary care practitioners. Unless it's something that is an absolute emergency, you do need to come to either UTC or an A and E. So hopefully that helps. I'm sorry, I can't give you much more in terms of data-wise. As I say, it is quite a tricky one to pinpoint down.
Could I just follow it up, chairman, if that's all right? I'm very pleased to hear what you said about coping with the situation. But maybe at some stage, some serious discussions need to take place about where treatment is taking place and where it's most appropriate to take place, and that might need serious conversations with GP practices and GP practice representatives.
Yes, and certainly perhaps inviting those discussions with our CCG colleagues and with primary care representatives. But we do regularly have an open dialogue as a system in terms of urgent care. In fact, just yesterday, I was on a call with representations from primary care across all of Lincolnshire, talking about a number of issues. So they are involved in that, but I absolutely agree, perhaps some sort of feedback in how we're addressing that as a system.
Thank you. Thank you. We have got an item coming up in September as well, and we've got Dr Kieran Sharrock coming forwards on behalf of the LMC. So we should be able to look at that a lot more at that point as well. Thank you. Okay, I now have councillor Park in.
Thank you, chairman. It's good to be here, by the way, because I'm new beyond the committee, and I'm sorry I was late. I haven't missed a school run getting into Lincoln for ten o'clock mornings, I tell you. What I'm really interested in is kind of what do you wish you knew back at the beginning of the pandemic? You know, if there was one thing, or maybe two things, I'll be generous, that you wish you knew then that you know now, what would those things be, and how would you then want to move them forward in terms of planning, not just for a future pandemic, but just for life in general within the hospitals? And in terms of what you were saying about diagnostic, I am really concerned with what I'm hearing in Louth in that the breast cancer screening has been taken away from Louth. If you're talking about more diagnostic screening going back into areas which are hard to reach, is that a temporary situation, and would you see their services being restored?
Okay. Shall I? I think I'd like to offer one thing that in hindsight we would have done maybe more quickly. And then, Simon, I'll leave the other one for yourself. I'll be generous, we can split it between us. And then, if you want to pick up the breast screening question. In terms of what would we have done differently? Actually, our response to the Covid pandemic has been well-received and positively commented on, not just within our region as things that we've done really well, but also nationally, we've been used as exemplar. And also, CQC, so the regulator for healthcare, has been really interested in what we've done, how we've done it, with really positive feedback. The one thing that I would have done sooner would be in relation to identifying one of our sites as a green site. I know it was something that was controversial. I know that there were a number of views with regards to that decision. And I know that we could have done things differently of how we came to that decision as an organisation. But absolutely, it was the right thing to do, and as a result of us making that decision, we were able to treat more patients than we would have done otherwise. We were able to maintain the vast majority of our cancer and clinically urgent surgery. But I would have ensured that we had done that sooner, to have prevented the delays that some of our patients did face and for which we apologise for, but I hope that people understand the circumstances that were behind those delays. So for me, that would be the number one thing that I would have wanted to have done sooner, but also have absolutely undertaken the process differently. Simon?
Thank you. You did steal mine. So I think one of the other things is around, right at the very outset of Covid, as London was struggling so very much, and then subsequently, the West Midlands, and you could see some, you know, real difficulties in those systems, particularly around critical care, we stood up in the East Midlands and at Lincolnshire at the same rate in terms of the preparation. And whilst we didn't know at that time how quickly Covid would spread, and the first, very first wave in April last year didn't necessarily move as quickly as the second wave and certainly the subsequent variants. And therefore, we maintained a very high level of alert for a number of weeks, where people weren't able to take much downtime, and our workforce were at a very high level of alertness and stress. And the benefit of hindsight would say we would have let a good few of those staff take some leave and take some preparatory downtime. Now, of course, at that point, we were working under command and control. We might not have had that ability to make that decision. But ultimately, that would have given teams who actually run for hundreds of days without any real annual leave, some of which restrictions because they couldn't take holidays abroad and things. But again, we would have given people that bit more of a break right at the beginning. And if we'd known that, that was going to be a significant delay coming through to Lincolnshire, then we might have done something differently there. The screening question is, without going into some of the specifics, but there's two elements to breast cancer screening, one of which is an agreement with our Public Health England colleagues and our commissioners to run screening programmes in different areas at different times. And that is to target populations and to focus attention at different areas at different times. And we have essentially a series of quotas that we need to be able to get through in order to make sure that we've done our screening. And because of that, we see that certainly our screening mobile units move at different times throughout the year. And that is part of a planned cycle. That includes Sleaford, Louth, elements of the east coast, and also Grantham. Now, we also have some areas of static capacity as well, so that if people miss that opportunity, they then are able to go to other centres. But what we don't have is the ability to replicate that across all sites at all times. And therefore, we keep the larger centres with the static capacity, and we move the mobile units. So as we move away from an area, it's not that that service has disappeared. Some of those patients on the screening programme can go elsewhere, but it will eventually come back around again as part of that quota system. And we agree all of that in a programme as a system and with our colleagues in public health, so that we know where to target and when, and that we're able to cover all those numbers. So it's not that Louth is losing its service and it will never come back. It is just, and the same for Sleaford, and same for a number of other areas, it's just that a case that at certain times of the year, we will move that around. I hope that answers your question.
Can I just come back, Holly?
You may, yes. Councillor Park, you need to put your microphone on.
Sorry. Really appreciate the honesty, actually, in those responses. I find the response about Grantham particularly interesting in terms of, I think there's a lesson for all of us to reflect on there about sometimes you've got to take the risk. And I think, you know, that has proved a really beneficial service. In terms of the mobile units for the breast cancer screening, I'm really grateful for that. And that will certainly give me something to go back to, to my residents who have raised it. I think for me, there is a challenge back there on that in terms of managing expectations in the, you know, district council, county council, ten years' worth. And I didn't know the answer to something that's obviously been in place for a long time in terms of public health capacity. So I think there needs to be more public awareness and community awareness that that mobile unit does move around. And so I'm just wondering if there's anything more that can be done on that.
We will consider that to see what further we can do to help with the communication with regards to the mobile screening and the services. Because it's not just breast screening that's mobile, there's other mobile screening services. So we will take that on and see what we can do to strengthen the messages to our communities.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think we've had a good discussion on this matter. I have Dr Wookiee left now, and I plan on closing down the discussion, apart from a couple of questions I have myself. Dr Wookiee.
Thank you, chairman. Brian Wookiee, Health Watch. I think some of the things I was going to raise, you've answered in your reply to councillor Allen. And that was the extremely important issue of where and when the public should seek advice. This is something actually that precedes Covid, when there was considerable confusion, and I think that continues. It's partly a question of communication, and it's partly the fact that people, when they have an urgent issue, whether it be an emergency or whether it be urgent, and they don't define the difference between that, they just need some help. And I think that it is actually extremely difficult for people now to know. There is a general feeling that access to GPs in some cases is very difficult and prolonged. Then people are not clear about the nomenclature of urgent treatment centres and A and E. And in relation to Grantham, switching from an urgent treatment centre back to A and E, the Grantham A and E has always had a lot of qualifications added to it, where the ambulance service actually takes patients to a more central A and E in terms of the care, and that is either to Boston, Lincoln, or Nottingham. So I think people, and the feedback we're getting, is people are still not clear exactly which is which and what actually takes place in the A and E at Grantham as distinct from the SDC. We know in this room, and obviously there are many here who know more about the detail of day-to-day problems in Grantham. But there is a difference clearly between the STs, the UTC, and the A and E. But A and E has become a sort of generic term for an emergency centre anywhere. And I think although successive leaders in the health service have tried to change the name to an emergency department, various other things, I notice that you are still using the term A and E. And yet, there are people, not everybody arrives by ambulance, some people have to make a decision themselves. And I think to expect people to make a decision as to whether they're urgent or whether they're an emergency is not reasonable. So I think quite a lot of work still needs to be done on this to give people clear instructions when they need to seek rapid advice, let's put it that way, as to whether they use 111, which I think is becoming the preferred option, or whether they actually transport themselves or are taken by a friend to an emergency department or a UTC. But I think there's still a problem, and it's probably got worse since Covid. Thanks.
Thanks, Dr Wookiee, and agree, absolutely, there are a legacy of issues around nomenclature in particular. And some of that is just nationally, how we've defined the different services to be able to tackle the full gamut of urgent and emergency care. You did pick up on the 111 number, and I think that is important. We do try to reinforce that as much as possible. And in Lincolnshire, we have something really very positive that sort of links into that 111, and that is the Clinical Assessment Service, that many people won't recognise as the Clinical Assessment Service. It'll just be the people that they speak to when they call 111, and that is a local service run by LCHS. It is predominantly our GPs and our practitioners from Lincolnshire, who are able to combine their knowledge of patients' primary care records and the primary care inputs together with something, as you say, that is urgent for them, that they need to deal with. It's not something that they feel they can wait to go and see their GP, but isn't necessarily something that they need to go 999, somebody who's potentially unresponsive or something else. else. And the more that we're able to use 111 effectively, the better, especially as we have this sort of local ability to plug our services into that. And the cancer service is very effective, and obviously not run by ULHT, but something that does make a huge difference to patients coming to the UTCs and A and E. And without that, there are tens of thousands of patients who would otherwise would be walking in or would be driving or being driven in, who don't need to. But I agree, I think there's more that can be done. I think obviously as we're looking to the, potentially to the acute service review consultation, look at the future of services, that clarifying the nomenclature and what our services do in a way that is very easy to understand by everybody across Lincolnshire has got to be a key point to that.
Okay, thank you for that response. I just have a couple of questions myself, and that is on page 28, paragraph A, can you expand on what the identified risks associated with the finances are, please?
Simon?
So I can pick that up. So the way that NHS finances have been tackled this year are, I think, still fairly unique. Last year, I think we talked about the last financial year being one that was designed primarily as a response to Covid, and therefore it changed a number of the ways that we are financed as a trust, but also as a system. And this year, we've gone in with some of that legacy, in that the years being split into two approaches, what we're calling H1 and H2, the first half and the second half of the year, as opposed to Q1, 2, 3 and 4, which we used to use. And H1 essentially is using some of the same model, which is an element of top-up funding to cover all of the elements, the additional costs that come through having to respond to Covid. And some practical examples of that are Moy Park is an example, where we've had to expand clinically in order to be able to offer additional space. But also, we have waiting lists that we've not been able to continue to work through with last year that we now need to catch up on, and therefore we have lots more clinical activity to work through. The risk ultimately there is that as we move out of that system, we move back to the position that we found ourselves as a system prior to Covid, which is a deficit in that we essentially spend more money than we receive in terms of income as a system, and ULHT specifically is a part of that as well. And that underlying structural deficit that we had before will return if we go back to the previous regime. The risks that come with that, obviously, as an organisation, ULHT have operated under financial special measures, there are various connotations to that, it limits our ability to be able to do certain things, and there are elements of risk that are associated to that. But also as a system, if we are a system that spend more than we receive, it will limit the ability for investment in certain areas as well. And I think that's the risk that we're describing there, is that ultimately that structural issue that we had prior to Covid hasn't gone away. And if we move back from the Covid style of the financial system, back to the old system, then that will return.
Okay, thank you. Also on page 28, paragraph C, has the new UTC at Lincoln had a positive effect on reducing the number of patients into the A and E, and if so, by what sort of levels?
Simon?
Yes, so far, the most sort of material impact that we've had is that patients who have gone into the UTC have been able to be seen quickly without limitation of physical space, in that they have been seen faster in some cases. The ability to be able to expand the UTC, to have more clinical rooms, to be able to have greater facilities, has helped colleagues in LCHS be able to see more patients and see them quicker. At the moment, we haven't seen lots more people moving into the UTC than we were previously saying in the A and E, but that's under the context of that our demand this year is highly abnormal, as it has been last year. And therefore, the ability to predict what we should have seen in the UTC, and what we should have seen in the main area of A and E, is extremely difficult for us. So what we can't say really is that we can use a baseline from, say, two years ago to be able to understand what that drift is. What we are able to say, though, is that for those patients going into the UTC, they are being seen, more patients, many more patients, and they are being seen quicker than they used to be.
Okay, thank you for that answer. My final question is, how is the recruitment process progressing and how are you recruiting? For example, is there any overseas element to this?
So I can take that answer. So as an organisation, our recruitment is extremely positive, and we've got our lowest level of vacancies that we've had as an organisation for many, many years, which is positive. We are reliant upon, well, there's two things that's driving that, three things. One is our normal recruitment activity that we're undertaking. The second is that we've been part of a national programme to recruit healthcare support workers, and we recruited over 200 healthcare support workers that have gone through a training programme, who have been starting with us over recent weeks and will be starting with us in the coming weeks. So therefore, it takes our healthcare support worker vacancies down to virtually zero, which is really, really positive. The third element is we do have, and again, we're part of a national programme with regards to overseas recruitment, so we do have a number of nurses who have joined us. I think we've had two cohorts now of nurses from India. We did have to suspend it for a period of time when India was at its height of its crisis with regards to its response to Covid. But I'm pleased to say that that's now back reopened, following discussions at a national level, it's an appropriate thing to be doing. So three streams of our recruitment, it's a positive picture, and a number of our people being attracted into Lincolnshire have actually been attracted because of the developments we've got with the university, and particularly with the medical school. So as we thought would happen, it seems to be happening in reality now, that the medical school and that relationship with the university is attracting people to come to work at ULHT, which is really positive. And we can share details around numbers specifically, if that's helpful, following today's meeting.
Yes, thank you for that, and that would be very helpful, thank you. So in which case, I would like to thank our presenters, and I'd like to move to a proposal. Firstly, I would like to propose that we thank those staff who have worked tirelessly throughout the pandemic in the NHS locally and at ULHT. And secondly, I would like to propose that we note the information presented by United Lincolnshire Hospitals as part of a general update, and also for future reports from the trust to focus on specific service areas, such as cancer care as we move away from the pandemic. Do I have a second for that proposal, please?
I'll second that, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Whittington. Okay, in which case, all those in favour, please show. Okay, that's supported, thank you, and thank you. So we'll move straight into agenda item eight. Once again, United Lincolnshire Hospitals NHS Trust, the consultation on hospital urology services. You will find these on pages 39 to 52 of the agenda pack, and I'd once again like to welcome Mark Brassington, Deputy Chief Executive and Director of Improvement and Integration, Andrew Simpson, consultant urologist, and Chloe Scruton, General Manager Surgery. I'll hand over to you once again for a quick 10 minutes presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk to the committee this morning with regards to the proposals for the urology service across United Lincolnshire Hospitals. I'm just going to provide the background, I'll provide Andrew and Chloe opportunity to add anything that I've missed, and then we're open to questions, if that's okay. So just in terms of a bit of background with regards to urology services in Lincolnshire, urology has been on our fragile list of services for some time. And this is driven predominantly by the availability of workforce, by the demand of the service, that were causing challenges for us to be able to meet the expectations and demands placed upon it. And that's not just demands and expectations of our public, but also of our clinical bodies and regulators. And urology has had quite a difficult past. There is a need from the Royal Colleges, but also from the Get It Right First Time Programme, I'm not sure if people are aware of that, but this is a national programme that reviews specialties and compares specialties against each other, so you've got a degree of benchmarking. And the Royal College report that we had undertaken, which was an invited visit to our service, but also via the National Get It Right First Time Programme, it was very clear that our service was outdated, had challenges and needed to change. We don't currently provide a consistent offer to our public across the county. We know that we have differing levels of service on each site, particularly Lincoln and Pilgrim I'm talking here, and we also know that at weekends, our emergency take currently, so if you're an emergency patient with a problem, you, one weekend you'll go to Lincoln, the next weekend you'll go to Pilgrim. So it fluctuates between the sites, which again, doesn't give certainty or clarity for our public in terms of service offer. We also know that we have challenges for access, so patients wait longer than they should do, and we've got a high level of cancellations. And that isn't very good for one cancellation, let alone the volume of cancellations, circa 1,000 a year, because we know that for every operation that's cancelled, there are plans that people have put in place, the mental stress that people have gone through to get themselves ready for their surgery, and then it doesn't happen on the day that we say it would happen. And this predominantly is due to the way that we've had to organise our workforce. So if a consultant is on call, it could have an extremely busy night doing emergency operations, the next day their elective list will be cancelled. And this is quite a traditional way of running a service, but it's outdated, and we know it needs to change and be different. So what we're proposing is that we have a degree of separation between our elective service and our emergency service, how we organise our workforce. And for us to do that, that means we do need to change some flows of our patients, and that affects about 4% of urology patients that we see a year. So that's the kind of scale that we're discussing here. So our proposal is for our emergency patients, instead of alternating between Lincoln and Pilgrim during the week, sorry, at weekends, what we're proposing is that we will centralise, we'll move our emergency patients just to the Lincoln site. And that affects about 400 patients a year from Pilgrim would be treated at the Lincoln site. Now, in order for us to be able to have space to do that and to be able to separate those services, we would need to move about 800, these are approximate numbers, of patients from Lincoln to be treated at Grantham and to be treated at Pilgrim. So this isn't about everything coming into one of our particular sites and staying there, this is a redistribution of how we treat our patients across the county. And as I said, this is about 4% of the activity that the urology service treats. Now, the benefits that we expect with this is that we'll be able to organise the workforce, so we'll be a more attractive employer. That's one of the benefits. But the most important benefit is that we believe we're going to improve access and reduce waiting for our patients, particularly on the cancer and elective pathways. And from an emergency point of view, when a patient comes in, we expect to be able to treat them in one go. Now, on a high proportion of times, if they come in, they then have to be sent away to come back to be treated on a different site or on a different day because of the way that we've had to organise ourselves, because of the challenges that we face. So we believe that this model will take away that inconsistency, it will improve access, and also we will be more responsive to our patients' needs and the public's needs. We have been going through a process, and we have started an engagement consultation process, which was initially running for six weeks, and through discussions, we have extended that to a 10-week period, and that finishes on July the 23rd. We have had planned events, we've had surveys. In terms of the events, I think it's five in total will be running, we've discussed with stakeholders, with partners, and we've also had a patient panel. We've had 120 responses to date, it's still open, and we're still looking for more responses, and we've got more events planned, I think there's one today or tomorrow, there's one this week. And the patient panel is generally supportive with regards to the plans that we're suggesting. So what we're looking for today from the committee is to seek your views, we are looking for support for the plans, and we are looking for support for the way that we are proposing to proceed following the engagement and consultation, which obviously will be subject to the themes and the feedback that we get, which closes on the 23rd of July. So I'll pause at that point and just ask if Andrew and Chloe have anything they wish to add with regards to my introductory comments.
Thank you, Mark, and thanks to the committee for giving us this opportunity to talk about urology, which forms a major part of the surgical activity at United Lincolnshire Hospitals, but has, as Mark has alluded to, had its difficulties over the years. This proposal is part of a larger piece of work that has seen the size of the urology workforce expand with two additional consultant appointments and an additional tier of acute care practitioners, whose role is to focus on delivery of acute urology that will benefit patients across the trust. I think the key point is that the way we handle acute urology has been problematic because of the division of the two sites, both receiving admissions during the weekdays. And this has meant that clear recommendations that have come from bodies such as NICE for treatment of stone disease within a 48-hour window of admission haven't been achievable because of lack of staff and lack of capacity. Amongst other things, the acute Lincoln unit will have dedicated access to theatre lists to deliver that acute care. And as Mark has said, many of these patients would have been discharged to be readmitted some weeks or even months down the line, which is in nobody's interests. Having acute services at one site prevents the conflict of emergency and elective activity, which serves nobody. And the elective activity at both Pilgrim and Grantham will in fact increase, in line with an overall increase in capacity for urology, surgery, patient and diagnostics that goes hand in hand with the additional appointments. Thanks. Chloe, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add?
Not at this point, thank you both.
Okay, thank you. In which case, I'll move to our questions. Well, councillor Allen first, please.
Thank you, chairman. My query is to do with, well, it relates to page nine in the public consultation pack, and it's to do with the cancelled procedures, and that's 1900, but I take it those are cancelled elective procedures, are they not? Could you answer that question first?
Yes, that's correct. Those are cancelled elective procedures that would have been pre-planned on our elective operating lists across a trust.
So this proposal to rationalise emergency procedures and to do that at Lincoln, it's not going to affect that, the numbers that you've got displayed there?
So, yeah, so the numbers that we've got displayed, the main reason for those patients being cancelled previously was due to the consultants, when they were on call, they were also undertaking elective activity at the same time. So like Mark alluded to, when consultants were on call, if they were overnight and had to come in for cases during the night, we would then cancel the elective procedures the following day, which contributed to the quite significant number of cancelled ops on the day that you can see. In our proposal, when consultants are undertaking operating lists, they will not be on call, they'll be undertaking elective commitments only, therefore, they won't then be in a predicament whether the on-call ask then overtakes the elective ask.
Right, so there should be improvements in those figures, that's what I was asking. Thank you.
That's our aim, yeah. Sorry, thank you.
Okay, thank you. councillor Whittington?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. Actually, I think since I raised my hand to ask my question, I think part of it may have been answered by some of the subs- have been answered by some of the subsequent comments. It was really around the elective, well, the, the additional 800 patients at Grantham and Pilgrim, because I had written down presumably this is the elective work, and I think that was already been answered. But I'm just wondering around that elective work, obviously, some of it obviously is surgery that's going to involve stays in hospital, and some of it's going to be day case. It, it's really related to the capacity issue again at both Grantham and Pilgrim, especially Grantham, because obviously, I know at the previous item, we were sort of talking about, you know, the capacity of the medical and surgical beds at Grantham. I'm just wondering if, if there are plans to increase the, the level of elective surgery at Grantham and Pilgrim, is there going to be sufficient bed capacity there? But, but also some indication of, of what's the mix between sort of those procedures which are, which are day cases, which obviously wouldn't have such a great, an impact on the wards, and those surgical procedures that are going to need longer stays. So some just indication of, of the split between the two would be quite useful to kind of understand any of the capacity issues at Grantham and Pilgrim. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So if I, if I start just with regards to the capacity question, then hand over to, to probably Chloe with regards to the split with electives and day case. So in terms of the capacity, there, there are different challenges on each site. So Grantham, I'm confident with the plans that we have in place will have sufficient bed capacity. The challenge with Grantham is that we want to do significantly more surgical activity, which requires the additional theatres that we have there currently. So we have four theatres, that are our theatres, they're, they're built, and, and we utilise them to their full capacity. We have got two temporary theatres on the Grantham Hospital site currently. As I said, one of those will unfortunately be moving to another hospital site later on in the summer, but we are putting plans in place to ensure that we have two theatres from the new year, two additional theatres in the new year on the Grantham Hospital site, if plans go ahead as we expect. So the Grantham challenge is theatre capacity rather than, than bed capacity. At Pilgrim, it's the other way around, it's bed capacity rather than theatre capacity, but we're confident with the plans that we have, that we will be able to undertake the additional activity that we are proposing, not just in, in the urology plans, but also in all the specialty plans, because we look at this in totality across our hospital sites. So different challenges, but we have confidence that we'll be able to deliver the plans that we're putting in place. And Chloe, do you want to just pick up the, the activity split?
Yeah, thank you. So within urology, we know a lot of the procedures that we undertake can be undertaken as day case procedures. So we work to a model where 80% of our elective activity should be, patients should be go through as day case, so admitting them on and then discharge at some point in, in our German day, depending on their recovery times. In this, in this proposal, with a lot of our work then being centred, elective work at Grantham and Pilgrim, with cases still undertaken at Lincoln, we're confident that with the teams undertaking more elective urology cases, they will then be, be able to put in pathways of care and protocolled discharges to ensure that patients are optimised as day cases and don't have inappropriate stays. And, and that's something that we've seen in other services, as with more has gone through of the same specialty, the teams become, and the physi-, so that's the nursing teams, the physios, the OTs, the anaesthetists, that they become used to those cases and how to optimise them better. So, so yeah, basically ensure 80% of our activity, we will be planning to put through the sites as day case procedures, so patients will go home the same day, and over 20% will be elective stays.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, chairman, thank you presenters. The proposals seem to make sense. However, I am concerned about the number of cancellations. You look from the day case electives, approximately three and a half thousand, 1900 cancelled annually, 1300 of these by the hospital, details of these are 17%, 10% lack of beds, 7% lack of surgeons. What about the other 83% of the hospital cancellations? What are the reasons for these? Thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, so in term, in terms of this split, so, yeah, correct, so we've got 25%, so that's 25% of all of the cases that were cancelled on the day due to a planned procedure. So we, we've, we've got varying reasons. So some of the issues that we've experienced within urology, we've, we've touched on before in terms of the consultants then doing emergency provision and therefore unable to undertake the theatre cases. We have had issues due to lack of beds as well, and another issue that we haven't actually, that hasn't actually been covered in the slide is lack of availability of theatre staff as well. So basically, we've gotten, we've got ourselves into a situation where because we're, we're trying to spread ourselves quite thinly in terms of emergency theatres and elective theatres across the sites, we were unable to be able to staff both of those theatres effectively, hence why the split that we are proposing means that we'll have dedicated, dedicated teams of staff to be able to undertake the elective and emergency procedures at the Lincoln Hospital site.
And, and just to add to that, so there's a whole range of, of reasons why, why people are cancelled. It could be equipment failures, equipment issues, availability issues, the things that Chloe's mentioned, but also the patients, when they come in for surgery, may change their mind, they may also be unfit to proceed for surgery on that day. So there's a whole range of things that drive cancellations. What we're trying to focus on here are the things that we believe will be able to affect through these proposals, and there are some other pieces of work that we're doing to try and affect the total cancellations. There's, there's a large piece of work we're undertaking at the minute with regards to pre-operative planning with our patients, that again will help with reducing the level of cancellations that we see as, as an organisation, because it's not good for us, it's not good for our patients, and it's not good for our colleagues, because they can't do the job that they're employed to do when they come to work each morning. So it's the worst of all worlds currently. So we, we absolutely want to reduce the number of cancellations that we have.
Thank you, chairman, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Councillor Woodleth?
Am I on? Good, thank you, thank you, chairman. Good morning, Mr. Brassington.
Good morning.
Are we there? About two years ago, I think actually, I raised concerns about urology in one of our meetings here, not in this room, but elsewhere. Perhaps you remember, and a whistleblower contacted me to raise concerns about whether or not urology will actually continue at Pilgrim Hospital. And I think you may remember, we had a discussion privately in the corridor afterwards, outside, about this and who it was who supplied the information. I suspect that people in Boston will consider that this is just the first step in moving the entire operation of urology to Lincoln. People in Boston tend to be rather suspicious of changes in their healthcare, and they're very, very protective of Pilgrim Hospital. I personally hadn't heard about this until I picked up the papers, so I'd like to know, of course, what, what discussions you've had with people in the Boston area and how you've involved councillors, for instance, in local councillors, district councillors in this decision. I wonder how you would expect the residents of Boston to react to it? Do you expect that the surgeons who live in Boston or nearby will actually retain their services with ULHT as a result of this? And I suppose if I lived in Butterwick, which I don't, but if I lived in Butterwick, I would know that Pilgrim Hospital is about 10 minutes away, and a fast stash for the ambulance, but I would also know that on bank holiday, Butterwick to Lincoln might be a lifetime away. It's quite a journey, and I don't think I'd want to be bounced around in an ambulance from Butterwick to Lincoln on a bank holiday. So you can understand perhaps from my point of view, as I represent Boston, that people there, very protective of their hospital, they'd like to know more about what's going on, they like a bit better consultation, because I haven't heard anything about this until I picked up the papers. And generally, is this a first step in the transfer of the whole thing? I'll leave it to you now, Mr. Brassington. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much for your questions. I think there are three questions in there which I can, which I, I'll take the first one and then probably to Andrew for the second. So the first one with regards to, is this a, a start of services moving from Pilgrim, which I'll pick up? The second one is what conversations have happened with our workforce at Pilgrim? And then the third one with regards to the process that we've undertaken with regards to consultation, I'll probably pull in Anna Richards, if that's okay at that point. So I absolutely do remember our conversation, and I can, I can share that change in the health service, if it means moving things between hospital sites, not just in Lincolnshire, but through my experience, is always difficult and challenging. I can assure the committee and for anybody that's, that's watching this today, that actually, that we don't have any aspirations of, of stripping services from Pilgrim and centralising them to other sites. What we're looking to do here is to provide the most up-to-date service models that we can, learning from the best across the country, that will benefit the whole of the Lincolnshire population. We do not have capacity on any of our sites to centralise all of our services on, on, on any of them. All of our sites, as we've said previously and will continue to say so, have a really important part to play in the future of United Lincolnshire Hospitals. We are not looking to undermine any of our hospital sites. That said, we do need to accept that the way that we deliver our services, it does need to be different to meet our, our standards expected of us, the clinical guidance that's always changing and evolving and coming forwards. And unfortunately, as, as always with the health service, there is continual change. So no doubt we'll be having further conversations in coming months and years with how we need to organise healthcare services for, for our population. So hopefully that reassures you that there's no intention to, to remove urology from the Pilgrim Hospital site, nor any other service for, for that matter. We believe that Pilgrim has a really bright future and we're committed to that going forwards. So just leading on to the conversations we've had with the workforce, because I know that there'd be many, and I've been party to it, to a few. So Andrew, do you want to just pick up the mood music for our colleagues at Pilgrim?
Yes, thanks, Mark. When I joined this trust in 2006, we were going through a process of, of combining the two departments of urology. Prior to that, we had separate departments, the Pilgrim and the Lincoln site, but it was, I think, realised both through national recommendations and by local colleagues that you needed a certain critical mass to deliver a service, to make it viable, and to recruit and retain people within the service for the future. So there's been a journey whereby we've brought colleagues together, but till recently, they've still been working on separate sites without the opportunity for interaction and close working that many people value and, and learn from being part of a bigger team. The colleagues at Boston recognise that in the light of the GURF and Royal College recommendations that Mark has talked about, this is the way forward for the delivery of acute urology services for trusts throughout the country. Colleagues at Pilgrim welcome the opportunities to work more closely with their Lincoln colleagues and actually form a, a physical team together on one site during their acute weeks, rather than the very split site, silo working that we've had to date. So the colleagues at Pilgrim are on board and are excited that this reconfiguration also brings the opportunity for more specialist work, particularly stone work on the elective side to come through Pilgrim Hospital, so develop specialist skills at Pilgrim over and above those that are occurring at Lincoln currently. So there's a real development potential for the Boston unit. And there have been anxieties obviously from colleagues at Pilgrim more widely within the medical community about the level of support afforded to other inpatients at Boston under other specialties. For this reason, we're putting in additional support on a daily basis, so that there's always urologists available to give support and provide expert urology, urology opinion for the inpatients at Boston and other sites as part of this reconfiguration. So in short, yes, colleagues are on board and keen to be part of this. In terms of the wider engagement and consultation, perhaps Anna, you might like to comment on that?
Hello, yes, I will. Just, just for the committee, I'm the communications and engagement lead for the trust. I just wanted to, to be clear that we're involved in a consultation and experience now, and so this isn't a done deal, it isn't a decision that's been made. Us bringing this to the committee today is part of the, the wider public consultation. And there's been quite a lot going on. I think Mark's already described that the activity is ongoing, so there is an open public survey. We're involved in a series of public engagement events, which we've shared very widely, although I note your comments that members of your constituency may not have heard about it, and I think there's more we can do to share it. But just, just for your kind of reassurance, we've shared the details of the consultation widely on social media, on our website, through our local media. We have shared them with the clerks to all of the local councils, asking them to share with their interested parties. I know that our clinicians have been sharing details of it with their urology patients so that we can capture particular feedback from people using the service at the moment. And also, we've been using a lot of our stakeholders and partners to help us share the information about this consultation. And also, I would ask members of the committee to help us with this actually, so helping sharing with your constituents and, and relevant parties that you know, and to share, to spread the word and, and ensure that we get the feedback that we need to this consultation to help us in making a decision.
Before I bring you in, councillor Woodleth, I will say as well that I did have some reservations about the short length of time of the consultation. I have shared these and they were extended by four weeks, so I think we've got to give credit where it's due, that they are actively trying to make sure it is a full and robust consultation process, but I will allow you back for a very short one.
Well, thank you, chairman, and we have a similar interest here, don't we? Something else to work together. The point I would make is that no one comes to a councillor unless they're concerned. People come to my door when they are worried. So that's the issue that I raised two years ago. I hadn't heard about this before, this, before I picked up the papers. So whatever consultation you're doing in the wider community, you need to do it better. Social media is not necessarily the best place to go, you need to be able to spread things more widely. I should assure that most of my colleagues at Borough Council don't know anything about this either, so you need to do better on consultation. Thank you very much, chairman, for allowing me to come back.
Thank you, councillor Woodleth.
Did that work? Am I still on?
You are, yeah, just press it once, that's it. Thank you. Okay, in which case I'm just going to move straight to councillor Parkin.
Thank you, chairman. My question's actually been partly answered in terms of how we ensure that there isn't de-skilling between staff at different sites and, and how we ensure that the synergy between the teams. So if there's any additional comments on that, then that would be really interesting to hear.
Thank you. I think the, the key is that colleagues throughout the department will be contributing to the delivery of acute services, so there won't be a question of, of de-skilling those aspects of urology care that are emergency care, because everyone will participate in the delivery of that. So there will be a better balance in terms of experience, because there will be inherent in that a rotation of staff, both at senior and at intermediate level across the two sites, so that not only do people experience all aspects of urology, but get to work with colleagues from across the department, which can only be helpful.
Okay, thank you. I have just councillor Lynda Wotton left now, and then I have a couple of questions myself, and I will move to a proposal. Thank you. Councillor Wotton?
Thank you, chairman. I would just like to support my colleague councillor Wittington with, it was great to see that we're going to have more elective care going on in Grantham Hospital, but one thing really puzzles me, Mark, you said that we were going to have one theatre removed because it's going elsewhere, and I've got this vision of theatres travelling round the county. Can you please explain if it's going elsewhere and also we need to replace that theatre, what's going on? Because it just doesn't make logical sense to me. Thank you, thank you, chairman.
Thank you for the opportunity to expand on that. So the two additional theatres that we have are called Vanguard theatres, they're mobile theatre use- They're mobile theatre units. We were extremely lucky to be able to secure them, because as you could imagine, they were under great demand nationally. As part of our agreement with the company, we unfortunately, one of those theatres, contract has come into an end because they have a contract with another provider who's now ready to take that theatre into use within their hospital service. So it's not within Lincolnshire, unfortunately. It's going out of our region to another organisation as part of the mobile theatre unit contracts that this company has. They're the only company that there is in the country providing these mobile units in the way that they're currently configured. So we are having conversations with another company regarding supplying some modular units, which will be more, which will be static. They will be under our control and this unpredictability of availability, if you can follow those two words together, that will be removed and be more in our gift. So we're hoping in the new year that we would have been able to make some progress on that. And we're happy to update the committee in future months on those plans. I hope that answers your question and provides some reassurance. It's not us playing, we're not playing chess with these theatres around our county. It's outside of our control, unfortunately.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Lynda. Okay, I have a few questions myself. Is there a detailed impact assessment for this proposal?
And the answer is, thank you, chairman, that the answer is yes, that is being finalised at present. So there's a quality and quality impact assessment that's being completed. We'll happily share that with the committee if that would be helpful. It's in the process of finalisation at present.
Thank you. Yes, that would be helpful. And also, what level of response have you received to the consultation so far? And can you report what general themes are coming out?
So as part of the update, I think I've said there was 120 responses so far from the survey with further events planned and engagement planned. Anna, are you in a position to be able to share the themes at this stage? Or is it too early to be able to share?
Yes, I can. So I've had a look at the survey responses we've got so far. I haven't done a full analysis of them, of course. But I think opinion's kind of split in half. So I think a good proportion of the people who've responded understand the proposals that we're making and why we need to make these changes and are supportive, particularly on the basis of reducing the level of elective cancellations. But there are concerns raised about travel and transport, which I think would be expected by individuals who are concerned about having to to travel further for their emergency care. That's all I've really picked up to date in terms of the themes. But yeah, travel and transport and there are some worries about that and then, yeah, supportive comments too.
And if I may just add to that, because those comments will particularly relate to the emergency aspect of care. That's 400 patients and we accept that's still 400 patients that require a different journey than would have happened if we had this alternating service remaining across Lincoln and Pilgrim. But just to say that our ambulance services are supportive of this proposal.
Thank you. That brings me on nicely to my next question. On page 45 of the report, it states that under these proposed changes, if a patient were to arrive at Pilgrim and it was deemed urgent, the patient would be transferred by ambulance to Lincoln. Has any consideration been given on how the patient would then be returned to Pilgrim or Boston? As it could be likely that they came by car to the hospital or live locally and then they may then not have the transport to make the journey back home. I think that's a real concern I would have.
Andrew, do you want to just pick up on the pathway with regards to the emergency department through to a transfer inpatient stay and then either discharge or return?
Thank you, Mark. So clearly, the level of urgency will determine the nature of the response. Indeed, if there's a critical emergency where a patient is too sick to transfer safely, then the medical team will travel to whichever site is required and provide care locally. So that's something that we need to make quite clear. Where is the requirement for a transfer for assessment or treatment? That may involve an inpatient stay and discharge following that, following which the usual arrangements would be made in relation to appropriate transfer back to home. In terms of assessment and then subsequent discharge, we'd build on the existing pathways for emergency care and we would facilitate transfer back to the home site as far as we're able to do so. And that's in line with the existing provision we have for our emergency services.
Thank you. That's good to hear. In which case, I'd now like to move to a proposal. My suggested proposal would be to prepare a draft response based on the committee's comments today, which can be submitted to the next meeting of the committee on the 21st of July for consideration and approval. Do I have a second for that proposal?
I'll second that, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Wotton. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. That's supported and thank you to our speakers. In which case, I'd now like to move on to agenda item nine, update on Pilgrim Hospital paediatric services. Once again, from United Lincolnshire Hospitals NHS Trust. You will find this on pages 53 to 62 of the agenda pack. And our presenters from United Lincolnshire Hospitals are Mark Brassington, Simon Hallian, Divisional Manager of Family Health, and Dr Suganthi Wakim, Divisional Clinical Director for Family Health. Again, if I can hand over to you for around about 10 minutes of a presentation and then questions after. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you for the opportunity to discuss where we are with regards to our paediatric services, particularly on the Pilgrim Hospital site. And if you could just bear with me when I am going to share a little bit of the history, because I think it's really important to understand where we've started and where we currently are and find ourselves as a service. So for new members of the committee and for a reminder for existing members of the committee, unfortunately, the service at Pilgrim Hospital, particularly paediatrics, found itself in a very challenging position in August 2018, to the place where our clinicians came to us with significant concerns to the availability of the workforce and felt that they were unable to sustain a paediatric service on the Pilgrim Hospital site. The implications of that were wide, potentially wide-ranging. Because if you can't have paediatrics on the hospital site, that places at risk your maternity services and your neonatal services. And as an organisation, we shared those concerns, significant concerns, with regards to not being able to provide those services or a degree of service for our east coast residents at the Pilgrim Hospital site. So we worked extensively with a whole range of colleagues, some from the committee, some from our local population. And we had MP support as well. And it went to the highest levels and was discussed in Westminster with regards to the situation that we found ourselves in. As a result of that, we worked extremely flexibly with training providers, with our regulators, to look at how we could provide a service and have an ongoing service at the Pilgrim Hospital. We took that opportunity to, similar to urology, we took that opportunity to review the model in which we provided services, because we acknowledged that the service that we provided was outdated at that time. The model that was put in place was a paediatric assessment unit. This operated 24/7 with a maximum length of stay of 12 hours. So this was a change from an inpatient paediatric service, where people would stay for as long as they needed to. They stayed for 12 hours. If they had ongoing care needs, they would be transferred to another hospital, which predominantly was Lincoln. We had dedicated ambulance in place in order to transfer these patients and their families between hospital sites. The philosophy of a paediatric assessment unit is supported and encouraged and expected from our Royal College of Pediatrics and Child Health, because it's the more modern, up-to-date way of accepting, assessing and then treating children. The other thing to note is that during this time and as a result of our workforce challenges, because there's a degree of sharing our workforce between the three services that I mentioned before, the special care baby unit at Pilgrim had an increase in the number of weeks that a child, when it was a baby, when it was born, was able to be cared for on the Pilgrim Hospital site in order to manage some of the risk that we acknowledged was there because of our workforce and staffing challenges. And therefore, we were looking after babies who were born at 32 weeks or above, whereas previously it was 30 weeks and above. So therefore, there was a change in service that we're able to provide. We have been in regular conversations with the Health Scrutiny Committee and we have maintained, it's really important point, from the initial concerns to now, and it's ongoing, we have maintained really strong relationships with our local community and users of the service. During 2019-2020, we saw that this 12-hour length of stay model wasn't meeting the needs of our clinicians, of our population, and we were seeing people being transferred to the hospital site and then being rapidly discharged. And that wasn't in the best interest of anybody. So we began to flex that model that was agreed and have more flexibility and clinical oversight of patients over 12 hours on the paediatric assessment unit at Pilgrim. We had a visit from the CQC in 2019 that noted that we had flexed away from our initial model and actually that was seen as a negative, where we saw it as a positive because we've been flexible to the needs. What we needed to do was to review what we're providing, how we're providing it. And when Simon and Suganthi joined in terms of the new management team, they undertook that review and worked really well with our clinical teams and with the local population to agree changes to that initial model that were put in place. The outcome of that is that they developed something called a short-stay paediatric assessment unit. So instead of a 12-hour length of stay, this was increased to 24 hours. That's enabled us to treat more people at Pilgrim, children at Pilgrim without unnecessary transfers to other hospital sites. And it enabled them to treat a greater range of children. We agreed this change to the model through our COVID command structure. So this butted up to our response to COVID last year and through our governance, it was reviewed and agreed that to maintain as many children as possible at Pilgrim, we would adopt formally as an organisation, this revised interim model. So the current situation is that the clinical teams absolutely support this short-stay paediatric assessment model. And the board reviewed a paper which you have received in the beginning of June with regards to the change from the initial model of a 12-hour length of stay to this short-stay paediatric assessment unit that has a 24-hour length of stay rather than 12 and has the ability to keep children up to 48 hours, depending on the clinical need and requirements for those children. So another degree of flexibility. We're also really pleased to say that the East Midlands Neonatal Network and the board have agreed that the special care baby unit at Pilgrim now meets the national designation standards and can now, again, operate at taking babies from 30-week gestation period. So again, we've managed to mitigate that risk through the work of the teams in the specialty. Also really positive is that Health Education East Midlands have agreed that the short-stay paediatric assessment unit and the service stability that that brings now offers a really positive training environment. And the team have worked really hard at agreeing a new training offer that has been accepted and actually has been seen nationally as really innovative. And we believe that people are going to want to come to Pilgrim Hospital, because they won't only just see the short-stay paediatric assessment unit model, they'll also work across the system and across other organisations, which again is really innovative and welcomed by our training partners. Our average length of stay, though, remains below 24 hours, which is really positive, because the model enables people to stay up to 24 hours. And the important point that we've got to acknowledge here is that the vast majority of children can now remain at Pilgrim and not be transferred. And in the notes and in the covering paper for this agenda item, last year, 36 children under this model had to transfer. But this isn't just because of length of stay. This is also because of clinical need, where more complex services and interventions needed. So it's really, really positive that less than half a percent of the paediatric activity at Pilgrim now transfers under this model to another hospital site, which is a really, really positive outcome from where we were in 2018. So just to reiterate that point, the emergency department at Pilgrim takes children. There are no limitations upon people turning up to the emergency department. The service at Pilgrim can receive, can assess and can provide treatment under this model, like I said, for 99.5%, if not higher, of children that require the services from that east coast locality at the Pilgrim Hospital, which is a really positive place to be in, bearing in mind where we were three years ago with regards to the risks to the service. I would like to say publicly that Simon and Suganthi have led the clinical teams to reach us to this point, for which I'm extremely grateful for. And I know that the population and the engagement work that we're doing, they're extremely happy with the place that we find ourselves currently as a service. Therefore, we wanted to provide an update to the committee today, a really positive story. And the thing I haven't mentioned is that we've actually recruited more people, which has enabled us to deliver this model. And I'm sure the team will wish to comment on that. But our proposal is that we should now take this model and take it through a process, so we don't refer to it as an interim model. We believe that we should take a 12-week engagement exercise or consultation to the public and population to ask people's thoughts and views on this model. We believe, based on the positive feedback that we've had from regulators, from a clinical aspect and also from the local population that we've been working with, we believe it will be positively received and therefore we would be in a position to acknowledge this as the service model that we're providing at ULHT and particularly from the Pilgrim Hospital site. I'll pause at this point, as I did before, and just invite Suganthi or Simon to add anything, to either correct anything that I've said or to add anything that I've missed. If not, we'll head to questions. So Suganthi or Simon, is there anything you wish to add?
Suganthi, do you want to?
So the only thing is, in terms of the special care baby unit, 32-week gestation. That's the only thing that we just wanted to amend. In terms of what we are asking is, actually, would help us if we go on to the substantive model in providing a stable workforce who know exactly what we're doing and also clarity to the population of what our service is going to look like. So that will help us in recruiting, retaining staff and also informing the public of what services are on offer at Pilgrim site. Because currently with the interim model, it's quite difficult for us to articulate that to the public. Thank you, Mark.
And I was, Mark, just going to make two alongside comments. One was the recruitment. So we have recruited staff based on this description of a service model and we've been able to recruit pre-qualified substantive consultants into Pilgrim, which is one of the worries in 2018, we wouldn't be able to do. So they've come to work in this model and see it's positive. We've also been able to recruit trained sick children's nurses from other organisations to come over to work in this model. So I think Suganthi is right, getting to a position where we can say this is the model we are committed to offers us the retention with those staff and the opportunity to do some more positive recruitment. And my only sort of added comment on the model, Mark, was that we've got, it's 24-hour paediatric assessment unit with 24 hours of further observation opportunity behind that, driven by clinical protocols. But we have also got groups of children that will stay in for longer than 48 hours. So that's the mechanism we've got. It's very prescribed in terms of which children those are, but actually that's the way that we're able to deliver 99% of care to children being on the Pilgrim Hospital site. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. In which case, we'll move to questions. I've got councillor Allen first, please.
Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, chairman. It was a very interesting presentation, and I raised my hand quite early on, but I think my question, to a certain extent, was answered right at the end, and it was to do with the ability to actually offer this improved service to the twelve-hour model that you moved to after the difficulties that you experienced three years ago. And I did wonder whether that was a result of being able to obtain the appropriate resources to allow you to do that and have some degree of comfort that those resources were going to remain if you were intending to move to this improved model. And I think you answered the question by saying you have got the appropriate resources, and they are substantive, so there's no reason to suggest then that that model can't be put forward. It does seem to be a significant improvement, and it is one that perhaps needs advising within the local community. It ought to be perhaps as an enhancement to the situation that you operate at the moment, rather than anything that's intended to move towards a full pediatric service, I think, because otherwise, there's great danger of getting into the same sort of consultations and difficulties in arguing why that's not the case or why you have to move back from that that you had three years ago.
If I may, just comment, because I think that's a really important point, that we believe that through the hard work of the team, we've reached a point where the population now will not see a difference with regards to the services it can access on the Pilgrim Hospital site. The difference is how the service is offered, and that affects how we organise our clinical service and our colleagues that provide the service. And therefore, the question is, what degree of engagement and involvement, consultation do we require in order to now adopt this as our permanent model that we wish to provide on the Pilgrim Hospital site? As I said at the beginning, we've had a really constructive relationship, difficult at times, but constructive relationship with the local population and with a particular, a couple of particular groups that have shown significant interest in this work, and rightly so. And again, we're grateful for SOS Pilgrim and their support and the help that they've provided in developing this model and getting to this place that we find ourselves in currently. Okay, thank you. Councillor Woodley.
Thank you, chairman. Am I on? I'm not. Right, so thank you very much, Mr Brassington. Well, congratulations. I think it's a success story, and I am actually able to offer congratulations. I don't always criticise people, but in this particular case, I think you deserve congratulations. The only thing I would probably be concerned about is on the front page when it says, when it says, "The trust will recommend further engagements carried out to make the model into a more long-term arrangement." We want to see it as being a permanent arrangement, really, rather than just long term. But yes, it's a very, very good story. I'd like to pay tribute, actually, to the leadership and members of Pilgrim SOS who have fought with great dedication to preserve this service at Boston. And I attended many meetings where they spoke so well, and I'm pleased to say that the trust has responded positively. This is a great day, and I'm very impressed. And I say, my only concern is that I want to be a permanent relationship or a permanent arrangement, rather than just a more long-term arrangement. Permanent is very, very important. But yes, well done. Yes, well done. It's very, very good news. One thing, of course, is that there's been extensive patient and public engagement. You can't lose by that. It has to be the bedrock of everything you do, and if you do that, I'm sure you will come out as winners, along with everybody else. So again, surprisingly, you might be surprised, councillor Woodley congratulates you on everything you've done here. Well done. Thank you, chairman. Unusual, isn't it?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll have to pop to you, Simon, in a second, but thank you very much for those really positive comments, and they're gratefully received. My choice of language could have been better. We would be looking for this to be a permanent move to how we deliver the service at Pilgrim Hospital site. And just in the broader point with regards to engagement, absolutely, we're committed to model our future engagement activities and how we've been working from the pediatric perspective. So there is that absolute commitment from our organisation to do that, because there's so much to learn from the process that we've been going through over the last three years with the local communities. Simon, over to you.
I was only going to echo councillor Woodley's point around SOS Pilgrim. So Sigamthe and I were lucky enough to not get involved in this until April twenty nineteen, so we weren't around for the conversations when the model was debated in twenty eighteen. And we very early met with the interested groups from within SOS Pilgrim, and at that point, they got to a very eloquent description as to what their concerns were and what they felt that the population needed. So I think, you know, we came in with the same view as them, a shared view, which got us to a very positive place with them, but I echo the fact that they were able to explain what their experience had been, what the population wanted, made it much, much easier for us to then start to co-design this response to it. So I just echo, and I have written to Alison Marriott, just explaining that we've got the approval from the trust board to this model, which is the one we talked to them about, and expressing my gratitude to SOS Pilgrim for their input to date.
You may come back if it's very, very quick.
First of all, again, congratulations, and you're quite right, Alison Marriott has shown great courage and dedication throughout this, and I pay public tribute to her for her dedication in this. But thank you again. Congratulations. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Parkin.
Thank you, chairman. I think you might be pleased to know this is potentially a question for, this is a committee, and a point of reflection for the committee, and which it is for you guys. And it is also because I'm new and genuinely don't necessarily have a full understanding of this, but I'm Louth-based, and so when my, I don't want to talk about how many times my kids have been admitted for various different things, but obviously, all of our services are Grimsby-based in terms of paediatrics. So, you know, we are the Lincolnshire Health Scrutiny Committee, and I'm aware that this model will not be the model that many families and many children actually experience within the county, but we actually don't have that level of scrutiny to the services that those other families get. And so there's something for me about the synergy there, and is there anything more that we can do to actually look at that, to explore those differences? Not necessarily because there may be a better or a worse model, but obviously, we are where we are because of resources and because of staffing, and I completely understand why we're at this point in terms of Boston. But I do also think that we need to remember as a committee that this isn't the model of care that many of our residents will actually achieve, and whether there's something more that we can do in the long term to make sure that we're looking at both. But also, have you looked at those different models that we have around us regionally? And are you confident and comfortable that the level of care, although within a very different model, is equally as good or as better, that is, you know, those periphery services in other authorities?
I'll just provide a general response to that and then hand over to people who can talk in more detail as required. The one thing that's just really important to note here is that the model that we're working to currently, as the refined interim model, actually is seen as good practice. It's seen as innovative and it's accepted practice. And as a result of that, we're looking to have the same types of approaches across Lincoln as well. So this isn't about a bespoke service at Pilgrim because of a range of challenges. We had a set of challenges. We took that as an opportunity to work with a lot of national leaders, and we had a lot of support to look at how we could provide a service from the Pilgrim Hospital. We've had a lot of learning from that, and we want to take that learning now into Lincoln. So please don't see this as a service that is the best that we can deliver because we have a range of challenges. Actually, this is a step forward in the service that we're delivering across Lincolnshire. And as I said, we want to take that learning into Lincoln. And I'm not sure the question of how it's provided in surrounding hospitals, but I'm sure the team can add more to what I've just said and probably answer your question further. No pressure.
So I was only going to add that, I mean, what we've done as an organisation is enable the Pilgrim team to keep children on that site for longer periods, so we've given them that flexibility and some constraints around it. The critical thing that's changed at Pilgrim is the approach of the clinical team there. So they've absolutely bought into the national directive, which is early assessment of children, early diagnostics, decision-making, and that's what enables a shorter length of stay, and most families want their child assessed, safely treated and discharged. So it's the ethos of the clinical team that are applying that's achieving the under-twenty-four-hour length of stay for us. And Mark's absolutely right, Sigamthe is taking that through the medical conversations into Lincoln site, and we've got an emerging approach at Lincoln that reinforces that cultural change in the pathways at Lincoln. So I think for Lincolnshire, within the county boundaries, from a provider perspective, we will have the same approach in both of the on-selected AED hospitals. We're unable to, and I think councillor Parkin, you were suggesting, it's not for us to answer the question about our neighbours. We do know that we've been involved in active conversations with other trusts about them wanting to understand our model, particularly trusts that have got the same kind of geographical distance. So we've had conversations with York and Scarborough. So there is, I think, an acknowledgement that there are ways of making this kind of model work in other areas, but we haven't had a direct conversation with NLAG or other neighbouring trusts.
Okay, thank you.
So just to add on to that, in terms of resources, we actually have increased the resources. We went from a six consultant body to an eight consultant body, so we have invested in the number of consultants we have on the Pilgrim side. And in terms of nursing workforce and medical workforce, we actually increased the number of people that actually work within the service for the bed base that we have. So we actually haven't taken any resource out of Pilgrim at all. What it does is, it actually, like Simon said, it's early diagnosis and planning for discharge as the children come through our front door, and we still receive the critically ill children, we stabilise, we desuscitate, stabilise and transfer them to the tertiary centres, and none of our pathways we have changed. The children we transfer to Lincoln at the moment are predominantly the children who have eating disorders, particularly at the pathway issue, rather than, you know, for the clinical need. For the clinical need, they are all cared for appropriately, just to do as soon.
Okay, thank you. And just picking up on, in regards to, say, Grimsby and those sort of areas, where we do have these cross borders, and we have quite a few of them, to be fair, across the county, we will have a conversation with the clinical commissioning group and get them to prepare some form of a paper, which will explain how the other neighbouring authorities do work, and then we can bring it through to committee.
That would be really helpful, frankly.
Okay, thank you, councillor Parkin. I now have Dr Wookiee, please.
Thank you, chairman. Brian Wookiee, Health Watch. I will be very brief because I support absolutely what's been said already, the fact that a tremendous amount of work has been done here, and all the three issues that were there with the original temporary arrangements have been addressed very effectively. And I will certainly be going back to Health Watch recommending that we support this. We have kept a close watch on it. Small children getting ill is an extremely scary business, as I can tell members from personal experience, even though the meningitis vaccine has made a considerable difference, it is still a very tense condition for all people involved in the caring of small children. And I think this is a big advance, and I think they've had a lot of stick, ULHT recently, and I think they deserve a commendation for what they've done here.
Thank you, Dr Wookiee. We've got councillor Whittington now, please.
Yes, thank you very much indeed, Mr Chairman. And again, I think I'm going to echo the comments that other members have made, and make congratulations to actually using some, you know, obviously following national guidelines, but using some very innovative thinking to sort of deal with a problem. And what comes out from this is the fact that because the sort of level of consultation with the general public in Boston, especially, and also the pressure groups as well, is a great example of how public consultation can actually work, and I really, hopefully, the trust will have learnt the importance, you know, from this and can sort of apply these simple principles going forward when they start their wider consultation on their other plans. My specific question, though, is just a little bit of a, obviously, when children, especially small children, are in hospital and in for, you know, a length of time, it's a very traumatic experience for children. I mean, I know from my own personal experience, when I was a child, I had many, several episodes in Great Ormond Street in London, and it can be very traumatic for a child, especially when you don't have your parents around. And I'm just wondering, obviously, in both this model of Pilgrim and also in the wider pediatric service, what support the trust offers parents so that parents can remain with children during their time in hospital? Thanks, Mr Chairman.
Simon, is that something you wish to pick up?
Me or Sigamthe? So, yeah, I mean, I think that there's not a huge demand to stay in twenty-four-seven, but we have got the opportunity to offer that support for families where it's required. We've got, except in the period we've been through with the pandemic, when they have had to obviously become strict on visiting, we have an approach which is encouraging for families to spend time with children, young people within the hospital setting, and we try to facilitate that in all ways. I think you're absolutely right, it is a traumatic time for the family, and it's a traumatic time for children and young people to be separated and to be exposed to things. So we have got work ongoing on things like better pre-operative assessment, so that we're working with children to understand what it feels like to come into a hospital setting. We've got some very strong development of place specialists, et cetera, to work with families when children are in, to do distraction therapies, and to just give that sort of less clinical feel to the support that's available. And, you know, I think the positive, again, for Pilgrim is the fact we've been able to recruit staff. We've got the establishment, as Sigamthe said, we've reduced bed numbers, we haven't reduced the staffing numbers, we've got the establishment to allow us to be supporting families in a very sort of wrapped-around way, which is another way that we're able to get decisions taken and processed through the treatment quickly, because the families are helped through that shortened process. So I think it's an absolutely critical point. I think we've still got things to do on that, but I think we could give a very strong set of examples of how we're trying to build that into practice and into how we want. Thank you for the question.
Okay, thank you. I've no further speakers, and I'm sure you'll be pleased to know I haven't got any questions either. So I'd like to move to the proposal, and I would like to propose that we note the report on the development of the pediatric service at Pilgrim Hospital over the last three years, and to thank staff for their efforts in maintaining and restoring pediatric services over the last year. That I, as chairman, respond to United Lincolnshire Hospitals Trust outlining the view of the committee on the substance of the proposal for a short-stay pediatric assessment, and to support the approach of a twelve-week engagement exercise. Do I have a second for my proposal, please?
Delighted to second that, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Whutton. In which case, all those in favour, please show. Thank you, that's supported, and thank you to our presenters.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll now move to agenda item ten, Lincolnshire Community Health Services NHS Trust. This report was circulated separately on an email on Friday, the nineteenth of June, and I would like to welcome our presenter from LCHS, Tracy Pilcher, Director of Nursing, Allied Health Professionals and Operations. I can hand over to you, Tracy, for a maximum of ten minutes, just walk through, and I will take questions at the end, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much, chairman, and hello, everybody. Thank you very much for inviting LCHS to Health Scrutiny today to give you an update on our restored programme and restoration of services for LCHS. I'll just briefly walk through the paper as it presented today. So first off, as we've said, we have restored all of LCHS services. So first off, as we've said, we have restored all of LCHS services since their peak of Covid. So in the first wave of Covid, which was back in April, May last year, a number of services were stepped down. But in the second wave, we continue to deliver those services and focus on Restore across the organisation. So integrated urgent care, as you are aware, Laughton Skegness Urgent Treatment Centres were closed temporarily overnight, still providing booked appointments and home visiting. They've now restored 24/7 walking. And we've also provided information around the profile for both those, as you can see. Currently, we're seeing approximately 100 patients a day, 80 to 100 at Laughton, which is pre-Covid levels. So in the pack, when we first started pulling that information out, you could see some differences between pre and post. Over the past two weeks, since that data was provided, we've had additional urgent care demand across Lincolnshire, and primarily all of our UTCs and all of our urgent care services are back to pre-Covid levels, or seeing greater numbers of patients at the moment, but still performing really well, and being able to meet the needs of the local population. In relation to Spalding and Gainsborough, we took the opportunity to restore those as UTCs. Prior to Covid, they were MIUs, so they were minor injury units. Now they're UTCs, which means that they're seeing a greater range of patients, both minor illness and minor injury, and also, again, having booked appointments and that integrated urgent care offer with the Clinical Assessment Service. And we've provided information on those. We're still working very closely with EMAS, making sure that we are offering EMAS crews on scene and additional advice and support so that we can support patients to be maintained at home rather than conveyed to hospital. And again, you can see the numbers of patients that we're seeing through that service. On average, we're seeing nine to 10,000 patients in our Clinical Assessment Service, and EMAS crews on scene is just one part of that assessment process. We are working in the system to provide same day primary care appointments and looking to trial that at Gainsborough and also at Lincoln. So again, this is an opportunity for primary care to book patients into our UTCs if they're not able to offer them same day appointments within their own primary care services. We've provided all of the information around all of our Restore Programme. And then in community hospitals, what we looked at as part of Covid, we're seeing up to 50% of our community hospital beds had patients with Covid positive at one stage of the second stage. So we've been working to make sure that we are restoring our community hospitals. We have one patient in community hospital with Covid at the present, but primarily, we have restored those services and offering those four pathways of care into community hospitals. We're working at the moment to develop our e-observation platform, so this will be integrated with our clinical observation centre and also our clinical record service, so that we've got those in terms. We have identified here that 67% is partially restored, and that's to do with making sure that we've got the flexible use of community hospitals, also the IPCs, such as in Scottwood. We previously, in Covid, we had 23 beds there. We're operating 17 beds, and that's to maintain that two metre distance between beds and making sure that we're adhering to our IPC requirements. We've also provided information around the admission profile across our four community hospitals. So as you can see, those admissions primarily are stepped down, patients coming from the acute, but also we step up patients from local communities. And we also have our Transitional Care Service working as part of that community hospital rehabilitation and rehabilitation from post hospital. LCHS Health Patient Services have been restored, and Butterfly Hospice has been restored back in January. And since operating, it's been virtually 100% occupied since those times. From a community nursing perspective, there was no change to our community nursing service as part of Covid. But what we have seen is a change in the way some of the appointments are being provided. But primarily, community nurses are working in that face to face in patients' homes, in care homes. The difference in what you can see in the profile around that slight increase in non-face to face, that's virtual consultations, is where we've been using some of our technology to work with care homes, so that we can provide advice and support into care homes without necessarily visiting. And I think that's been an ongoing piece of work. Allied Health Professionals and Children's Services, again, we have used virtual consultations to try and make sure that we're still able to provide support and advice to families and to patients. And that's going to be an ongoing programme of work for us. Transitional Care, which is our, so we have assertive in reach services sitting, and they sit at the front door of acute, and also support discharge. They've maintained, they're working throughout Covid, and have had quite significant impact in supporting patients in their own homes and being able to return those as soon as possible. And for specialist services, again, there's been a real focus for specialist services in providing virtual consultations and quite significant change in how we interact and support patients at home and in the community. Whilst we've been in Covid, obviously, we've now seen a significant number of patients having post-Covid syndrome. So this is patients that weren't necessarily in hospital, but may first, certainly from the first way, not necessarily have been diagnosed with Covid, but have experienced long term symptoms as a consequence of that. And we do provide, as the lead provider in Lincolnshire now, the post-Covid syndrome service, which is a developing service. Since it's started operating, we've had 438 referrals and 126 patients did discharge from that service, and provided information of their profile. LCHS also provides two of them, what was originally referred to as Max Vaccination Site, so that's at Lincoln Showground and the PRSA site at Boston. And there's been significant numbers of patients that have been provided with their vaccines. We've altered the model as well. So originally, those two centres did provide just the AstraZeneca vaccine. We brought online Pfizer, and now Moderna will be provided at Lincoln Showground as well. So trying to make sure that we're flexible as possible and meeting the needs of the population of Lincolnshire. And that's my paper.
Thank you, Tracy. In which case, we'll move to questions. I've got councillor White first, please.
Thank you. Can you tell me why this same day primary care appointment is needed in Gainsborough, please? Is it because the existing medical practice can't provide the service for the patients?
No, it's trying to work much more integrated with, so we've got a UTC at Gainsborough, we've got UTC, obviously, in those six locations across Lincolnshire. So we're trialling a way of working so that we've got a service or an environment that we can bring patients into, do face to face appointments if required, and provide additional support and capacity in those areas. So the trial is at Gainsborough because we have the UTC at Gainsborough.
Sorry, I just don't understand the relationship with the surgeries then, GP surgeries. Could you explain that, please?
So we work in a very integrated way. So obviously, primary care have a number of patients that need on the day urgent operations. Some of those are illness, some of those are injury. So the trial is looking to provide additional capacity to those practices and see if we can support some of those same day urgent. So our urgent treatment centres primarily will see patients as on the day. But if you look at the profile, 50% of the patients that present to our urgent treatment centres have an injury, and 50% have a minor illness. Some of those minor illnesses, they will have phoned their GP practice, or they'll have phoned 111, and they'll be directed into our UTCs. It's another way, or it's another service that we're offering to the population of Lincolnshire. So it's an additional service to those primary care services. Obviously, for some patients, complex, long term condition patients, they absolutely need to be seen by their clinician, by their primary care practice. But there may be some patients that we can support with, and we can provide that service within our UTCs.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Parkin, please.
Thank you, councillor Macy. Tracy, where are we in terms of community nursing across the county in terms of vacancies and staff force capacity? Are you happy, I am hearing that there's a lot of difference between vacancy rates according to where you are within the county? And how much of a concern is that to you? And how much is that impacting in terms of delivery on service? But also, ongoing kind of knock on impact in terms of adult social care, that kind of thing?
Okay, so we have 320 whole time equivalent community nursing services across Lincolnshire. There's works, it's divided down into what we call different geographical teams. So as you say, when you drill that down, and what you can see is some variation across Lincolnshire in terms of that community nursing, with some with a higher level of vacancy than others. We've worked very hard to make sure. So one of the things we have started this year is a degree apprenticeship programme. So we've appointed 12 students. They're going through their degree apprenticeship. And at the end of that three year programme, they'll come and work for us as an organisation. So we're trying different ways to make sure that we can attract people into LCHS. We've looked at the profile of our community nursing service and developed additional, what we call band seven practitioner roles. And these are complex case manager roles to, again, give the career pathway to community nursing, and make sure that we're looking attractive and can attract people into community nursing as well. We do offer the district nurse qualification. So every year, we send four people to Sheffield Hallam University to undertake their district nursing qualification. And that's a years programme, where they come out of our workforce and go through additional training. But we have got some gaps, and we have got some vacancies. But what we do do, every morning at nine o'clock in the morning, we do what we call a safety huddle. So what we look at is where we've got staffing across Lincolnshire, what that looks like in the individual teams. We move staff geographically across different areas if that's available. And we also look to see whether some of the appointments that we've got scheduled, we can provide virtually, or whether we can provide additional support or advice from other services, such as our home visiting services, our Macmillan. A quarter of the patients that we see in our community nursing service, our palliative and end of life care, and again, we work very closely with Macmillan, which is our specialist service that's also part of LCHS. So we look at different ways that we can still continue to see patients and meet the needs of individual patients.
Tracy, sorry, can you give us an idea of what those figures actually look like, and how much they vary across the county? Because, you know, it is a concern for me in terms of workforce capacity. And I can see that you're putting in plans in place to mitigate that. But what kind of vacancy rate are we running? And again, how, what is the impact of it being like? Because I have heard that the figures, for example, East Lindsay are quite stark. And, you know, I'm interested in whether it is worth us looking at community nursing as a separate, you know, a separate agenda topic. So I'm just trying to drill down to see if the data matches in terms of how bad or not it actually is.
Yeah, so I can share, I don't know if you can see my, what I can try and do is share my screen. So we have been doing a lot of work on this now. I can't share it in this screen. I mean, it's up to you. We have, as I say, 320 whole time equivalents in terms of the number of what is our community nursing. We increased that last year. So originally, we were at 284. So we've increased the numbers of staff within our community nursing, which, because we haven't recruited into all those posts, it looks like we've got a greater vacancy figure than we had done previously. But I'm very happy to provide that additional detail for you.
Yeah, I think if we can have that, and we can share it out amongst the committee members, and then perhaps look if we want to see it as being a future work programme item.
Yeah. The other thing I'll just say, we don't divide it up as an East Lindsay. So within East Lindsay, there's the Spilsby and the Horncastle team, there's the Mabelthorpe, and then there's the Skegness team. So what you would refer to as East Lindsay isn't the geographical area that we would refer to. So again, it's just important that we kind of talk about the teams and those geographical locations of the teams.
Thank you, councillor Parkin. Councillor Whittington?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Chairman. And thanks, Tracy, for the presentation. I want to ask some question around the post-Covid syndrome on page 14 of the report. And I'm presuming when you talk about post-Covid syndrome, you're referring to patients who've had Covid, who've had a diagnosis of Covid and are recovering. Because as part of that, you speak about some of the issues potentially they've got going forward. And you mentioned sort of psychological, mental health issues. So if you could just clarify first of all, that the post-Covid syndrome just relates to those people who have a diagnosis of Covid. But also wider, and this may be something that really we need the Lincolnshire Partnership Trust, is I think we're becoming aware of reports that are coming out, that there's going to be quite a lot of sort of mental health and psychological issues in the population, not just those people who've had a diagnosis of Covid, but those, you know, people who've been in lockdown. I mean, I read in the paper a week or so ago, that the reports coming in, just of young children, five and six year olds, whatever, who've been out of school for a long time, are very, very, have sort of concerns about going back to school. And I think a lot of people, you know, after being in this strange situation that we've been in for a long time, you know, the psychological impact on the wider population is going to be quite significant. And I know people have been talking about, maybe five, 10 years before the full impacts work their way through. And I'm just wondering around sort of the mental health and psychological aspect of not just post-Covid cohort, but also in wider population, what work can be done, and how you see sort of mental health and psychological issues being dealt with. But again, Mr Chairman, this might be something that we need the Partnership Trust and perhaps come to this committee and talk about. Because I think this is an issue that's going to be quite significant for quite a period going forward. Thanks, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Whittington. And I'm sure we'll pick that up when we get to the work programme later on in the agenda. But I'll hand over to Tracy as well.
Yeah, so the point you make about formal diagnosis of having Covid, no, because actually, in the first way, because of the nature of testing. So if you recall, in the first way, and prior to that, if you were at home with mild symptoms, you wouldn't necessarily have a Covid swab. And I think that meant that there is a cohort of people that have a range of symptoms that we would describe as probably post-Covid, but they'd never received a positive Covid swab for that reason. So we don't exclude people from the service because of that. So it is if they present with a range of symptoms and that long term fatigue. And also, what we do ask primary care to do is do a range of diagnostic investigations themselves before they refer into the service. There's some recent NICE guidance that have been issued around what a post-Covid syndrome service should look like. And it's really important that we do provide that psychological support. So we're the lead provider. It doesn't mean that we're providing all of the services underneath that. So as you identify, the psychological element, we would refer through to our PFT. And it is that MGT approach of making sure that we put some plans in place for that patient, and then we monitor those patients through that service. I think the point that you make about the long term psychological impact, both for patients experiencing and having symptoms of Covid, but also the rest of society, the impact it's had on young people's mental health and wellbeing, is one that I think at the moment, within the health system, we're very aware of, and are looking at different ways that we can meet the needs of those populations. But the psychological, and as you say, that long term psychological impact is something that we're seeing now, and seeing kind of within different services where patients are presenting in a mental health crisis or with significant psychological impacts, and they're now going into a very acute type of environment rather than that longer term, if we've seen those patients maybe earlier. So I think that's something that we are aware of, and we are monitoring. But it would be helpful, as you say, for the committee to have that full update from our PFT.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Cleaver?
Hello. I'm aware that the trust signed a five year lease in December 2020 on the St Mary's Medical Centre premises in Stamford. And that since then until this month, it's been used solely for Covid vaccinations, but is planned to be returned to use as a GP practice. Could I just ask what the trust's plans and aspirations are for any other future use of the premises during the remainder of the lease?
I'll have to come back to you on that one. I think that might be the premise that whilst we've signed the lease, it's on behalf of another organisation.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cleaver. That would be more for the clinical commissioning group, but we can certainly ask that question. Okay. Okay, I have no further speakers indicated, so I have a couple of questions myself. Can you provide more detail on the overnight medical cover arrangements at both Laughton Skegness Urgent Treatment Centres? And are there any plans to review this arrangement? As it's quite concerning that currently there is no doctor on duty overnight. And with the ease of lockdown happening at the moment, this is going to have some form of an impact on the number of patients using the service. And in our case in the coast, we'll probably more than likely need to then travel on to Pilgrim. I know it's concerning staff, because I've had a member of staff from there contact me to discuss it. So I would be interested in your response to that one, please.
Yeah, so prior to Covid, so some time ago, we reviewed our workforce model across all of our urgent care services, and we put forward all of our urgent care services, and we put forward a model where it was two practitioners on overnight, which is the model that we restored into. I think at the moment, we monitor that, we have an on-call doctor. So in the paper on page, and I'll just find the page that I put the information in. Sorry, won't find it. So in the paper, I detailed this, there's two practitioners on overnight at both Lauf and Skegness. We have an on-call doctor, so in the cases, if they need additional support or advice, they would have an on-call doctor. Our practitioners, we've spent a significant amount of time as an organisation, making sure that we have a robust training programme in place for our practitioners, and they do a master's level programme that takes them through into that full ACP role. And we also have additional support and advice through our clinical assessment service. We did review the model, the model was signed off by our trust board, and the model was signed off by our medical director as a safe and effective model in terms of delivery for the local population and the type of service that we're providing in that environment. And I understand that there may be concerns and anxiety for staff, but that is something that we're working through, we do monitor it. There have been no incidents overnight, there has been no sericins or any other untoward incidents in terms of how those two services are working, but they're constantly under review.
Thank you. I would just say, I don't think it's just purely staff either, I think residents have a very serious concern there, and that's certainly what's coming forwards to me. So it's something that I would like to see a review happening more often, really. My next question is, what is the capital investment being used for in Skegness and Lauf? And when are you likely to recommence this?
So we're looking at both the environments for the UTCs at both Lauf and Skegness. So again, prior to COVID, we signed off a capital investment in Lauf, UTC had started some of that work. Obviously, in COVID, the additional requirements around some of the IPC has meant that we're looking at that and making sure that those refurbishment plans are completed in line with updated guidance around ventilation that came out around COVID, and also some storage of the medicines. So I was at Lauf on Friday looking at those developments. At Skegness, we're looking at a more significant investment in Skegness UTC, and looking again at that whole environment, but again, making sure that whatever we do around refurbishment and developments, take account of the additional IPC requirements around COVID, the ability to isolate patients if required. But as you know, at Skegness, one of the big areas that we've got is our waiting area. And when we have significant numbers of patients, particularly over the summer, where at times we will see the double, the number of the patients going through that UTC as in the winter period, then we've looked at both an additional waiting area, but also a children's waiting area. So there's quite a significant amount of work, looking at what we need in the Skegness area, and making sure that that capital investment will meet those needs.
Okay, thank you, Tracy, for that. In which case, I've got no other speakers, I'm going to move to a proposal. Firstly, I would like to propose that we thank the staff for their continued hard work during the pandemic. I would also like that we note the information presented by Lincolnshire Community Health Services NHS Trust, and to thank all the staff involved in the trust to welcome the establishment of the new urgent treatment centres in Gainsborough and Spalding during the last year. And finally, to record the committee's concerns about overnight medical cover at Lauf and Skegness Urgent Treatment Centre, and to seek further reports on this at a later date. Do I have a second for that proposal, please?
I'll second that, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Whittington. Okay, all those in favour, please show. Thank you, that's supported, and thank you very much, Tracy, for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd now like to move on to Agenda Item 11, the National General Practice Data for Planning and Research and Data Collection. The report is found on pages 63 to 66 of the Agenda Pack, and our presenters from Lincolnshire County Council are Professor Derek Ward, Director of Public Health, and Katie Thomas, Head of Health Intelligence. And I'll hand over to you just to run through it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Macy. Good afternoon, everybody. This is a paper for information, really, but we thought it was a good time to give scrutiny a chance to ask any questions that we might be able to answer. Having said that, since producing the paper, the Secretary of State for Health and Social Care has published a draft strategy, which again, we could come back to a future scrutiny to pull out the headlines on. But this is all part and parcel of a general direction of travel for the Department of Health and Social Care, to use technology and to use data and intelligence in a more integrated way, in a more, a fit-for-21st-century way, to improve the health services that we deliver to the people of the country, and for us, obviously, for the people of Lincolnshire. In terms of the specific paper, it's something that Katie and I discussed, and it's within the context of, at the moment, as part of the integrated care system, we are trying to bring together a large number of different data sources, all anonymised, and they won't be used in an individual level, but they will be used at an aggregate level to help us understand the health and wellbeing of the people in Lincolnshire, to help us to understand where services are used and how they are used, and therefore to help us to understand and change the services that are commissioned and delivered across the county. At the moment, the data that we have access to at an anonymised level are predominantly data from the council, health and social care data, are data that we get from our big providers, which of course we're nearly fully cited on, so the acute trust, the mental health trust, the, the, the community trust, with other data sources. There is a fundamental gap in those data flows, and that is data from GP practices, from primary care. The government brought forwards the snappily titled National General Practice Data for Planning and Research Programme to try to fill that gap. And there was a lot of media interest when that happened. And understandably, really, because I think one thing that's come forwards is that the communications of the programme weren't particularly well done. There are a number of practices, and there are a number of people who are concerned about capturing data from general practice and what it will be used for. And the paper that Katie's drafted is basically providing some further detail for scrutiny about what's changing, what the governance and safeguardings are built in there, why the data is being shared, how it will be shared, and what and how we will use it. So I won't go through that detail, I'll pass over to Katie in a minute. I think just by way of summary, to introduce the paper, from my perspective, as scrutiny will be aware, that I produce a director of public health annual report every year as statutory responsibility. Again, I've been to previous scrutiny to talk about data that we did or didn't receive in terms of COVID early on in the pandemic, and how we've done a lot of work on that to get better data to inform what we need to do and where we need to do it. And so for me, capturing information and data from primary care is absolutely fundamental for us in Lincolnshire, if we are to produce the best health outcomes for the people of the county. I don't expect we're going to get significantly more money to do what we do. So what we do need to do is make sure we get the best value for the money that we spend across the county. And at the moment, we've got pretty good data from most of the providers, but there is this big gap around primary care. I'll pass over to Katie in a second, but just to give you a bit of a context, we might, for example, see at the moment, there are a number of people who keep getting admitted, keep getting picked up by the ambulance service because they've got poorly controlled asthma and they're struggling to breathe. We will then be able to see how many of those people who get picked up get conveyed into A and E, how many of those people in A and E actually get admitted, how many of those people get admitted for a long period of time and what the outcomes are. What we don't know at the moment is how many, how those people and how many of those people are actually, one, registered with a GP, how many of those people are being treated by that GP for, for asthma, and whether the treatment that they're receiving is best practice for asthma. So there's a big part of the jigsaw that is missing at the moment. Now, from, from our perspective, we would not look at individual cases, we would look at overall, how well are we dealing with asthma, and do we need to do something about that in terms of redesigning the pathway? But we don't yet have those data, and we can't look at it. So from my perspective, we do need to capture the data from primary care, we need to do so in an informed way, we need people, other people in Lincolnshire to understand what the data is that's being captured, the fact that we won't be able to see names and addresses or that level of detail, but the benefits of us capturing it, and that's what the paper outlines. On that, I'll pass over to Katie just to give a little bit more information, and then we'd be happy to answer questions. But this is an ongoing consultation, this particular part of the programme has been paused till September, when the Secretary of State is going to revisit it, so we can talk about it more in the future, but it's important to get it on scrutiny's agenda now. Katie, do you want to add?
Yeah, I'll just add a little bit, really. I mean, as Derek said, the detail is in the paper, so I'm not going to go into too much detail of what's in there, it's been shared with the, with the paper pack. From our point of view, the reason we're bringing it as an information item is really to share that detail and raise awareness. It's not our role to do that on behalf of national government, but there are risks to us in what we're doing if, you know, if the programme's poorly understood. So the main risks to us really are that at the moment, there is the opportunity for patients opt out. If the situation is poorly understood, more patients may choose to opt out, and that means that when we do get to use this anonymised, de-identified data, it will not be complete for Lincolnshire, if that happens to any extent here, which means it won't be as useful and we won't get the intelligence that we need. The other main risk to us is that if the situations are poorly understood, it may make people more wary of signing up to other data sharing agreements and those sorts of local things that we've already got in place and that we're in the process of doing for some of our big programmes like population health management, and that causes problems for us too. So that's, that's really why we're here. And just, you know, the main couple of things in terms of the detail of the paper, it's not a, it's not a new situation, it's to replace a data sharing situation that's already in place, that's been in place for over 10 years, this national one. So it's to make that simpler, and it's to make sure the right people can access the data to fill that gap. So it means that like with those other data sets, like hospital trust data, that directors of public health and their teams will be able to get this anonymised data to fill that gap in the picture. And just to reiterate, it's not names, it's not addresses, and every other field that is identifiable is pseudonymised, is what it's called, which essentially de-identifies the information, so you cannot identify individuals, but you can understand people's journeys through pathways, if that makes sense. So I don't think it's, it's worth going into more detail than that at the moment, but happy to take questions.
Thank you for that. We have three questions so far, so I'll start with councillor Whittington.
Yes, thanks, thanks, Mr Chairman, and thanks for the presentation. I think it was when, the question's really around opt-out and the level of opt-out, because if you assume a Lincolnshire population is sort of 750,000 roughly, I'm just wondering what level of opt-out would compromise the data? Because obviously, if a few hundred people opt out out of 750,000 pounds, it's a very small sort of percentage. Obviously, if it starts to approach tens of thousands, then obviously, potentially there will be a compromising of data. So I'm just wondering, if you could give me some sort of indication as to what level of opt-out potentially could, 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 could lead to data issues? And the second question is, you refer to the fact that the patients' names, addresses won't be shared, but I'm just thinking, obviously, you have, with Lincolnshire being such a big county, a lot of patients sort of tend to flow into their local services. I'm just wondering if the data does, even though it might not say that, I know somebody lives at a case ravine in Grantham, but there might be an indicator there that it's a Grantham patient, just so you can sort of understand the flows, does that make sense? So it's anonymised, so you don't know it's a particular person, but you know that particular person lives in Grantham with a particular, with a particular health condition. Thanks, Mr Chairman.
Yeah, thanks, councillor Whittington. I'll answer the first one, I'll let Katie cover the second one. So in terms of the opt-out, there isn't a figure on it. From our perspective, we would like everybody to, to share that, those data, because that gives us a complete data set. The real concern is, as you said, if it's a few people out of our three-quarters of a million, or nearly 800,000 if you include people who are registered with a GP in Lincolnshire, then it's not going to have a major issue. There's a concern about the overall number of people who opt out, and also the types of people who opt out. One big concern is, we have particular groups of individuals who opt out, and therefore the pathways for those people are really poorly informed by their experience of primary care, and that's, that's a big risk. So we really need to, and this is a national issue, as Katie said, we really need a very, very good communications programme on this from the government to say, this is why it's really important that you allow us to, to aggregate your data up, because that way we'll give you better, better health and care services. So there isn't a figure as such, apart from the fewer people who opt out, the better, although obviously that is an option. But my real concern is, we get particular groups or particular parts of the county where big numbers opt out, and therefore, we're not sure about what their experience of primary care is. Katie, do you want to do the geography bit?
Yeah, absolutely. So in terms of the way that de-identification happens, yes, we would link this data towards the data sources, but it's sort of, it's done at a level that gives you the best of both worlds, essentially. So in line with data protection legislation, you're only ever allowed to use the minimum amount of data that's possible to fulfil the purpose, to fulfil the need. So whilst the names and addresses are removed, the other, the way that pseudonymisation works for some of the other fields, as you would call them in a data set, is that if there's an identifiable field, like an NHS number, which is known and unique to a person, that is removed, there's a mathematical methodology that goes through, and it gets assigned a random number, so that you can never link that back to something else and know who the person is. So the other things that happen is that they are, the fields are broadened, so where you might not get a specific date of birth, you might get an age in years, or you might get a broad age group, and that happens throughout the data set. And what that does is, it means that in terms of geography, you don't have the address, you don't even have the street, but you have a low enough geographic area for us to be able to create the general intelligence. At the population level, when you're looking at geography, that, that is the minimum that you need, that is really all that you need. The importance of having records and being able to look at individual journeys through pathways is that you can then build certain cohorts of patients together, and you can see what their experience was, you can understand where a pathway worked and didn't work, and that's where it's important to have individual records, even though you can't identify the person. So it's sort of a level that gives you the best of both worlds. And I will say that although that de-identification is in place, you still don't provide that data to anybody else, there's enormous legislated controls in place around our use, the purpose of use, what we do with it, when we have to destroy it, and what we're even allowed to look at it for. So it's still enormously controlled, even though, even though it is anonymised in that respect.
Thank you, and thank you, councillor Whittington. Councillor Parkin.
Thanks, Chairman. I know that my ANGP practice has just taken a decision to opt everybody out en masse, and that they sent as a, that they broadcast out on social media. Is that a widespread problem across the county? Because I can imagine if it was, then we would have a real serious issue in terms of, you know, the viability of that data for you, Derek. And is there anything that we can do on a local level to engage with those? It does seem, in fairness, that the communication centrally has been a bit of a dog's dinner on this, and is there anything that we can do locally to kind of try and pick up the pieces on that?
Thanks, councillor Parkin. Short answer is yes, absolutely. Katie and I had a conversation with the, the local medical committee yesterday, or the day before, and we're going to have conversations with all of the practices so that they understand the background. I suspect the specifics of what you're talking about is a piece of work we're doing across Lincolnshire to work up our population health management programme. to work up our population health management programme, and we have a number of primary care networks and the GP practices within those who've originally said, yes, we want to be part of this. Because, as you said, I think the government comms certainly could have been a lot better, have then gone, oh, actually, no, we don't. A lot of that's misunderstanding and miscommunication nationally. So Katie and I, along with Kieran and the LMC, and primary care network clinical directors and others are trying to unpick that, to provide those reassurances. I think the really important point to make here is, it's not the practice's data, it's your data. You control your own health data. So as far as I'm aware, a practice can't en masse control your data any more than I can get access to it without appropriate governance. And this is where the confusion and the complexity comes in, and we just need to communicate this better. We will not be able to see individual data, we will not be able to see names and addresses, but we will be able to, by connecting it all up, provide better services for the people of Lincolnshire. And I think once the majority of people understand that, and also understand the very, very strict rules that we live by, as we already do with Covid data, with birth and death data as a council, lots and lots of other forms of data, the vast majority of people will say, this is a good thing to do, and I'm not going to opt out, I'm quite happy for our data to be used in that way. But it's a job for us to do.
Sarah, your microphone's gone off.
Sorry. What they did was they informed everybody that they would themselves opt everybody out unless we as patients contacted them and said we wanted to be in. They would assume that everybody wanted out unless we told them otherwise.
Hopefully, we can resolve that with some of our communications, because that's an interesting approach to take, considering nationally, the British Medical Association is supportive of the process. So the local practices aren't, I think is purely a reflection of, we must do better, and this really, and I think the Secretary of State's admitted this, must do better in terms of the communications as to why.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Woodley?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, Mr Ward? Well, I can say that personally, I'm supportive of what you're doing. I don't think that the medical services can move forward, don't they have the data to do so? And so I'm basically in favour of this. Obviously, I'm reliant upon the fact that you can assure everybody that everything will be anonymised, and can't get back, you know, can't be used to identify people. I did wonder about the random number side of things, whether or not more than one person has given the same random number. But I can't really criticise this, I think it's an important step forward. We have to be able to collate information to have an efficient, effective health service. So I'm disappointed that some people, or some organisations, are obstructing this, because I know that behind it, there is this concern about, I suppose, the Fujits, who, I think it was programme software which was used in the past, which was a bit suspect, and links when we consider what happened with the post office and so on. There are problems there. But I think we can be fairly sure that things have moved on from those areas. And I suspect, actually, I see no reason why people shouldn't cooperate on this, it's for all our benefit. So I've heard nobody as such complain about it as such. If there's a certainty and a guarantee that all the data is anonymised, I can't really see the problem with it, but maybe there is. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Woodley. Councillor Bilton?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I possibly can see a problem with this. It may not be correct, but obviously, it was mentioned national. Now, obviously, if local data is collected, what could happen is that this area could be denied funding on a national scale, because they can't show the figures of requiring it, and if we're looking to save money. So I can actually see, I could see why a practice might not want to send that data in, because then they might feel that they're going to lose funding. So there's a possibility. And certainly on a county scale, you know, Lincolnshire are often ignored. So we probably do need to have better communication on how this data is actually going to be used, and who's going to use it.
Thank you. I don't know if either of our presenters wants to come back in on that, because I think it was a good point made.
Yeah, if I could come back, councillor Macy, I think it is a really good point. I think the risk, though, is that if we don't have the data to make the case for Lincolnshire, other places will have the data, and they will have a more compelling evidence-based argument as to why they need income. On this, we've been working closely with the chief medical officer on his annual report, because he's very interested in rural and coastal health, and a recognition of the fact that large rural areas, especially with coastlines, need systems and health delivery and social care delivery that's different and maybe more costly. So these sort of data, and we've got the majority of it, but the general practice, the GP level data that's in there will help us understand better, help us make the case better, and hopefully help us get a more fair proportion of national funding into Lincolnshire and other rural counties. So I completely accept councillor Bilton's point, the more that we can capture these data and make that case, the better. And I think we've seen that with the Covid data. We had virtually no data at the beginning, now we've got a really good data flow, and that really helps us to target our vaccination programmes, to help to communicate to those populations that maybe aren't getting tested or getting the vaccine, and this is a natural extension of that sort of work. And a lot of us are now using the NHS app on our smartphones or other places to demonstrate that we've had our two doses. This, again, is another natural extension of that process, because GP practices will be able to share with us as individual patients, our own patient records. I wouldn't be able to see that level of detail, but we would be able to capture the aggregate data and then make the case better for more funding into Lincolnshire.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any further questions. So what I'd like to do is that we receive the report from the Director of Public Health and note its content, and probably receive a further update as this progresses on, because I do think it's important that we are playing an active role in this. So do I have a second up for my proposal, please? Thank you, councillor London Wooton. Thank you. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. And thank you to Derek for the presentation, and Katie, thank you. We'll now move on to agenda item 12, the Work Programme. I'll hand over to Simon, just to walk us through from pages 67 to 70, and the additional item for the 21st of July, which will be the Pharmaceutical Needs Assessment. Simon?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Just focusing on page 69, which sets out the items for the 21st of July. In an earlier discussion, there was reference to mental health issues during the Covid pandemic, and that perhaps in part can be picked up by the second item on the list, which is the General Update from Lincolnshire Partnership NHS Foundation Trust. There are three other items on the list, but one of those is a potential item, which is the Consultation on the Lincolnshire Acute Services Review, which may be starting, and it certainly will take up agenda time in the future. The committee will see that some of the future meeting schedules are blank. This enables the committee to respond to issues such as those that were on the agenda this morning, such as the Consultation on Urology and the Engagement on Pediatrics. But there is an intention to start to bring in some of the suggestions that have been made during the course, made previously, and perhaps during the course of the morning, such as an item looking generally at pediatrics across Lincolnshire. I understand also there are concerns about dental services, which is in the bullet point list at the top of page 69. But certainly we can look at bringing these items into the Work Programme over the coming months. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Simon. Is there any further comments? Councillor Wooton?
Yeah, thank you very much, Dean Chairman. Regarding the acute service review, I note that the CCG of Lincolnshire is having a meeting on the 30th of June. Are you aware if that review is being discussed or published until that date? Thank you.
I'm not overly certain they're sure as of yet. It is still in the national element of the process, and so I think they're waiting. They are, of course, in hope that it will be back to them by then, but I don't think we can say with absolute certainty, which is why it's purely there, ready to go in the Work Programme. The moment we're aware of it, we'll move forwards with it.
Councillor Cleaver?
Can I just say, I very much welcome a discretion on dental care, and also a general update from North West Anglia on the service it provides to those living in the south-west side of Lincolnshire. Please, thank you.
I don't know when, and we'll have to schedule it in again. Normally, we see them around about once a year, don't we, Simon? So...
Yeah, and we, during the pandemic, there have been no updates from North West Anglia. So maybe that's something that we could start to schedule in again. Thank you.
Thank you, Simon, and we'll certainly look into that. Councillor Cleaver, councillor Woodley?
Thank you, Chairman. How are we on the tassel set up, and whether or not the non-emergency transport contract process has gone? Because I think it's up, isn't up for renegotiation at this current time, I think. And where are we? Are we going to have more tassels in the future? I personally shouldn't answer that question.
No, it's quite difficult to answer that one. Yes, it is being reviewed at the moment in time. I think within my announcements, there was a timeline on where it's going to be and how they're progressing it through at the Clinical Commissioning Group. Could it potentially be tassel again? Yes, because it's an open bid, and of course, it's weighted in certain manners. My own preference, I would hope not, but there we go. But we will be looking at this again, it is on our Work Programme, and it is something that's very much at the front of our minds, I'm sure.
Thank you, councillor Woodley. Any others? Councillor Parkin?
Yeah, thank you. Just to reinforce the dentistry point, I think it is really important. My own experience of having a boy who needs orthodontic treatment is having had an NHS referral, the NHS referral from Lincoln Hospital has then passed back to a local practice in Laos, who have put me on, you know, on a waiting list. But what I've subsequently found out is that they, although they have a very large contract, to deliver, that they don't have an orthodontist. So they're actually holding the commission, but don't have the facilities to actually fulfil that. So I think there's, it's not just dentistry in terms of the responsive day-to-day, but that specialist level of dentistry and commissioning, I think really needs looking at as well. I was going to say drilling down to, but that's too bad a pun for me to get away with at the first meeting.
Yeah, I mean, fully aware of the sort of problems myself. I'm having to go privately to have treatment done because they can't do it locally. So it is an issue moving forwards. It's always a little bit more complex, because in terms of how it's commissioned, it is a service that NHS EI, as it is now, would commission, and of course, they come in and speak to us directly on. So it can prove difficult at times to try and get them in front of us, but we do have them on there, we have had them a couple of times, you know, a year, so we will try and bring them forward again, I think, especially since we've had the sort of easing of lockdown, so to speak. And there are so many problems now with people trying to get even just basic appointments. So we'll look at that again, certainly. Any further comments at all? Nope. In which case, I think it's quite clear what way we're moving forwards. And I'd like to thank you all very much for your attendance in today's meeting, and look forwards to continuing...